Okay, so we're going to call the meeting to order. I'm just going to say right now, I think the meeting's going to end at 9:30.
Yes, we can do it.
Okay, well, that's the goal team. Yes, please do. Okay, that's based on nothing.
Well, don't be offended if I walk out during somebody's council report at 10 o'clock.
So, do you want me to time council members as well?
You probably should. You probably should. Okay, first thing is to review and approve of the agenda, and I think we had a couple of changes. We're pulling one item off of the consent agenda. And Glenn, you had requested that. I mean, we can just say that now, I suppose. Which one did you want to pull?
I'd like to pull the complete streets plan out of K for the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay. And just looking at the agenda that was over there, there was some item that I think we -- oh, no, it's already there.
But we had added that from the -- yeah, it's on this agenda. But just to note that we are adding a discussion of the East-North Branch properties.
Okay. So, any other changes?
Can we talk about the complete street item from the consent agenda right away?
Sure. Great. So, we'll take that up right just after that. So, without objection, we're going to consider the agenda approved. So, now it's time for general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on some matter that is otherwise not on our agenda, and if you would try to keep your comments to two minutes or less. If you'd say your name and where you're from.
I'm Gretchen Elias. I live out off of Elm Street, across from the pool. And I am here tonight because I wanted to share some thoughts on transportation in and around Montpelier. And specifically, I'd like the council to consider charging some entity, some city department, or committee, or whatever the appropriate body is, with looking at our transportation system, and priorities, and modes comprehensively as a system. And I wanted to say a couple of things about why I'm thinking that that's something that the city should be doing. Transportation's a critical issue for so many of our city priorities. We're not going to achieve our net zero goals if we don't address transportation. The parking issue downtown is going to involve transportation, and of course, that gets into economic development, and making sure we keep the downtown thriving, and enable people to live down there, as well as work and shop down there. And transportation just gets at all of these things, so it's a really cross-cutting issue. And there's no one silver bullet. It's not like there's going to be one mode of transportation that's going to work for everyone, or solve anything, single-handedly. And I think right now, we seem to have a lot of momentum around this topic. I think that Montpelier Sustainable -- the Sustainable Montpelier Coalition provided a great vision for what our downtown could look like. We have new projects coming on with the transit center, and the garage, potentially, that are going to open up some new conversations for us, and present us with some new choices. And it seems like to maximize all of those new opportunities, we really want to be able to look at transportation as a whole. And the final thing I'll say, in terms of my own experience, is that for me, the circulator is a really important way that I can get around town without a car. And I learned in May that GMT is planning to cut essentially the parts of the circulator that allow for this commuting, the Elm Street portion and the Freedom Drive portion. And that's in their next-gen plan, that has been worked on for several years now, and it's been approved by their board. And I was really upset about that and concerned, and I reached out to a whole bunch of folks. I kind of did this like scattershot approach. Everyone I could think of, city council, city staff, a whole bunch of different people, and a whole bunch of different committees related to transportation. And the answers I got gave me the sense that with -- with one exception, Donna -- nobody really knew the status of what GMT was planning. And there were even conversations within the city that were assuming that the circulator would continue to exist in its present form. And this plan had been going on for a long time. And I just think that that really brought my attention to the fact that there is an opportunity here, to look at it more comprehensively, and make sure we're connecting all the dots. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen.
And just so you know, GMT is actually going to be here next week at our council meeting.
Great, thank you. I'm sure we're going to talk further about that in the near future. Any other comments? Oh, yeah.
Just to add a piece, instead of waiting until my council report for this, the Montpelier Infrastructure Transportation Committee, Gretchen, is going to be holding public hearings, whether that's in January, February, but they're now looking to pull together to have GMT aid there, as well as a lot of riders and consumers, to have a real lively public discussion on their routes and on mini-transit.
I'd like to be a part of that, so that's great.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd just very briefly, for general business, note, this is our first meeting. We've had all the sound re-done. There's now new speakers in the back, and new cameras, so we're hi-def now, right? Is that --
What? All right.
So, you all wanted an upgraded room, and you got it.
Okay. All right, I'm going to assume that there's no other public comment unless somebody jumps up. Okay. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
So, who -- second?
And that's -- we're assuming that's minus item K?
Yes.
And there was a second for the discussion?
I just would note, I did not fully read item B, the agreements between City of Montpelier and Christ Episcopal Church, so I trust that it is -- that I would agree with it, but I have not completely read the agreement.
Fair enough. Okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. So, moving on to the complete streets plan. Yeah, go ahead.
So, folks, like Larry and all, that year's stuff just passed. Anybody who's here on the consent agenda, that just -- that all just happened, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up from Pennsylvania.
You can always stay.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay. We're happy to have you stay, but just so you know, that's nothing like a Wednesday night in Montpelier at the council meeting.
Good times. All right, go ahead.
So, tonight is -- oh, sorry. Is the continuation of the presentation that was done in June by Stu Serrota, who was our consultant from outside planning and design.
Is he speaking to the mic, please?
Yeah, I think the mic is -- yeah. Is that better? Okay. So, this is the continuation of that. This is to adopt it. I went back and listened to the comments you guys had made back in June, and we made a few minor changes. Specifically, one was to address Ashley's concern about parking. The map in the plan is a draft, so then that way, it's not formalized. Every single street has to be this way. Those are some of those typology decisions. Will be policy decisions as we get closer. So, this will be incorporated into the CIP process to say, okay, when we're going to be doing a project, and we're looking out, we'll start doing the assessments then, to say, we need to make it a complete street, so that we have a complete network. And that's where we went with this, was to try to end up with a network that works, so that you don't have, you know, bike lanes that end nowhere. So, this gets pretty close to it, but there will be, as time goes on, there will be discussions in the community, in the neighborhoods, as these plans are formalized.
Question? Thank you. Glenn, did you have anything you want to?
I'll say, basically, my reason for pulling it for discussion is only that I think it's important enough, and I'm happy enough about it, that I want to really mark our decision of it on it. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that, as a car-free resident, and as someone who has lived my whole life without owning or driving many cars, not owning any cars, it's really important to me to see moves around transportation really broadly. As Gretchen was saying earlier, I depend on alternative modes of transportation, pretty much entirely. And I think Montpelier is doing a good job of allowing me to continue to do that. It's a great place for me to live as a walker. But I think that the complete streets plan, just as a layout of all of the existing conditions, and where we should consider moving as we change and repair streets, it's really something that I'm -- I guess I wouldn't say I'm thrilled about it, because it's not -- it doesn't -- it's not the kind of thing that excites me, but I'm very, very happy about it.
The end result, you will like.
The end result, I can't wait. I want all the streets to change right away tomorrow. And really, that's all I have to say about it. I just wanted to mark the occasion, which I think is a happy one.
Further comments or questions?
I think I would just use the opportunity to note that when the -- many members of the council went out to visit the cemetery last summer, spring, we all noted the lack of a sidewalk out to cemetery, and then the neighborhood beyond the cemetery. And I don't -- I think Complete Streets does a really nice job of prioritizing everybody, but just flagged that one, since we're discussing it, as one that we all kind of thought about at that point.
Further comments? Good.
Anthony Manona, live on Colonial Drive, a member of the Montpelier Transportation Infrastructure Committee. I just wanted to voice our support for this plan. I think it will provide a blueprint for Department of Public Works, when they're working on roads, to incorporate complete streets into them, and provide safe biking/walking infrastructure for all users of the road. An important piece of the plan that I found is section 3.5, which is traffic calming policy. And I think it's really important that we start to look at ways to improve, or slow down traffic, make sure that safer speeds. It was really interesting reading about how, you know, the slower the speeds, the less dangerous, you know, accidents may be. And so, it's, you know, just a really important plan, and I look forward to having the implementation take place, and having it be a blueprint for our city.
Great. Further comments? Go ahead, Donna.
I guess just to mention that, as Anthony serves on the Montpelier Transportation Infrastructure Committee, I spend a lot of time on this, as has Kevin, as has Corey, and I do appreciate the staff's support. It's been a long process. It's been a long process. But the end result is very good.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to assume that there's no further comments. No, coming once? Okay. Motion?
Move that we adopt the complete streets plan that was identified as consent agenda item K.
Well, second?
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Very exciting.
Happy to help.
All right. We have an appointment to the Central Belmont Internet Board as an alternate seat, and we have one applicant for one seat. And I know you're here. Would you like to address the council? You don't have to.
I don't need to, thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Oh, yes, okay.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if I should have said this before. I'm Richard Littauer. I actually also applied for this board on Monday. The deadline was Tuesday. I see it's not in the minutes. I see my application isn't there. Unlikely I'll get it, and the other guy's a lot more experienced, but just thought I should let you know that there's another person who would like to apply.
Well, so, yeah, we had an unexpected administrative outage this week, or the person that gets those was out with a medical issue unexpectedly, so it's probably in her inbox, and so.
That would make sense.
We didn't get that, we're sorry.
That's okay, that's why I'm here. So, no worries.
Fair enough.
Also here for, you know, the rest of it.
Another fun Wednesday night.
Please attend those meetings and get involved, because.
I know, I had a conflict last night. I don't know how to resolve this, but seeing as how the other guy has 21 years' worth of experience in Montpelier, you should probably just vote for him, and then read my application after, if you like. Thanks.
Yes, Jack?
I move that we postpone consideration of this agenda to a future meeting. Item's to a future meeting, so that we can see the application materials of both candidates.
Let me do it next week.
Second?
We meet next week.
Great.
I guess that's a motion, and it's been seconded. Further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next time, next week. All right. Moving right along. All right, we have a presentation from the Silver Maple Group, so welcome, Carrie.
Hi.
Hi.
So, I do have some handouts, so I'm going to go and bring these around. But there's two, there's a larger one. So, they have numbers on the upper right corner, so that's going to refer to them in order. And I should also say that this is also primarily about city parks, so it's not purely about the Silver Maple concept.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Um, maybe we'll --
Thank you.
That's --
Thank you.
Either there's others involved in the park, I have some extra copies, so the park department. Okay, Silver Maple Group, we've been working -- we've been meeting for a little over a year, a little over a year and a quarter. A group of primarily over 55, who are looking to be able to build a small, over 55, community in Montpelier. So, I handed off this survey map, because we've looked at a lot of locations, and we feel that this location is probably the best in Montpelier. Obviously, there are a lot of primarily terrain issues, where we have challenges when it comes to anything that's relatively flat. So, that is a survey map that the property owner, which is Fecto Homes, gave me, and he's fully aware that this is going to be made public. So, this is a 72-acre parcel. The Silver Maple Group is not looking for any much more than maybe 15 acres, and probably even less than that. So, it was -- I would propose that this be a city park, the balance, so it'd be like 55 to 57 acres. I met with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they thought it was a great idea to have a park on that part of town, which does not have any access to city parks in that vicinity. It also has access to 302, which would mean access to the bike path. So, wanted to just kind of explain where we're looking. So, under number two, which is a natural resources map, that is a border of the property. There is some dispute over a section to the left, like a diagonal there. It's already deeded to the city from the Stonewall Meadows condo association, but the dimensions are in the process of being surveyed to identify exactly where that is. But it would not affect the total number of acres. So, that is a -- I just found this one through their website, and highlighted around the corner edges of it, so you could see actually where it extends. Currently, it's being used as walking paths, and used by the neighbors and locals. But it's on the market, and the Fectos had said, well, if somebody comes up with a million bucks, and they want to build one house, we're going to sell it. So, that's kind of what we're up against. We are looking to build a small community. As you can see on number three, we've been working with Jay Ansel for quite some time, and he was kind enough to do a drawing. So, I have a larger one, which is this, and I can show. So, we're really looking at a very small part of this. So, this is only a section of that map, on the natural resources map. So, it's ideal, because not only do you have green space and recreation, but also have housing. And it's a very small portion of that, but I can show this to you.
You can just leave it over on the side. They'll probably prop it on the table.
So, we're looking at the Pocket Neighborhood, which is very tightly clustered, small homes between 800 and 1,200 square feet, that face a common green. And because there'd be over 55 housing, there does have to be road front around the perimeter, just a kind of a drive, so that people have access to their homes. So, there is this. And then, what was originally proposed is number four here, and that is the Capitol Heights, which was planned by the Fectos. I believe they did get permitting at the time, and it was in 2007, but it was for 219 units, and that had a lot of pushback, which you can understand. So, we're talking about maybe 32 units, and not right off the bat. So, the neighbors objected to it, there was a recession hit, and it just never happened. But you can see the access that they planned. The green building on the upper left was supposed to be assisted living, and then independent living, and then private lots, and then condos and apartments. So, what we're talking about, and one reason for bringing this out into the public, is just to dispel any rumors that, oh my God, there's going to be, you know, an 800-unit development going up in our backyard. But having a city park would be ideal for not just the neighborhood, but for us. And I also met with Ken Ballard, I guess it was, who was doing the feasibility study on the rec center, and mentioned to him, hey, you could put a rec center up there, and you could have outdoor, you know, soccer fields, and whatever you like up that way. With 72 acres, you could do it. So, the --
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
It's quite sloped, isn't it?
It's not really. It's not down below.
What's the elevation change?
The elevation, it does go up along for 302.
Okay.
And then it goes up gradually, but they -- we are -- I've talked with Tom about city's resource infrastructure, and there is gravity-fed sewer, and there's pipes, water pipes, because that was actually planned because of the development. So, if you look at that natural resources map, the first one, you can see some clearings, and those clearings were designed so that the Isabel Circle would actually be a circle. So, there was a lot of planning that already went into it, and a lot of backup. So, those two clearing sections are the most buildable, and they are slightly sloped, but they're really not terribly sloped. And I did meet with Meredith about wetlands, and there are no wetlands, or no rental pools, and it's a pretty good piece of property for building on, but not all of it. I mean, it's walking trails now. I mean, it's really a nice piece of property for activities and recreation. So, just to kind of show you what Pocket Neighborhoods are about, Ross Chapin is an architect nationally, who kind of came up with this. And you're thinking like your backyard is now your front yard, and your cars come into your backyard, and your front faces the green, and you're right close to your neighbors, and the whole point of that is for socialization and aging in place. So many homes in the city just are not suitable for aging in place. Takes me two flights of stairs to get groceries upstairs. So, it is challenging. And also, we can move out of that and get the younger families in. So, that's why I wanted to give you a sample of what it would look like. And then, the sample Pocket Neighborhood layouts, these are just from online. There are various different iterations of that. But it's really a unique opportunity to increase the market rate housing in the city, while at the same time creating a city park. And is Jeff here?
Yes.
Hey. So, just going to back me up on this, because he was at the meeting with the Parks and Rec. The last piece is the appraisal. So, that Jim Fecto gave me. It shows what the appraisal was in 2015. I spoke with Bruce, and, you know, he agreed with this. I mean, it was fine with him to let it be known. So, we're seeing Silver Maple, seven to eight acres. There's two phases, as you can see on Jay's drawing, where the initial phase would be 16 units, say. The second phase, based upon who would be joining in, would be another 16, but certainly no more than 32. Some of that can be intergenerational, some of it could be, most of it would be over 55. So, we're really looking to see if the city has an interest in being able to work with us in creating a city park, so that we don't need 72 acres, but the Fectos will not subdivide. They've already been down that road. And so, and it's also, you don't want to lose the opportunity of being able to have a park in that part of town. And the other is the income tax calculation. So, 32 homes that are valued at, say hypothetically, $250,000, when you get the municipal tax rate above $2,500 times the tax rate, the income is $86,800 per year. Right now, the Fecto land is -- entire piece is generating $2,700 a year. So, you're talking about a repayment in about nine years on $800,000, assuming that Silver Maple property would be, say, 200. This is -- I have the paperwork, so if you want some, I'm happy to send it to you. They're just my notes to help get me through. So, there are challenges. There's the survey that needs to happen. The good thing about the survey is that it's going to take some time to do that, and we're going to need the time to try to pull this together. Jim Fecto said, okay, I'll give you a month, and I won't do anything with that land, just see what you can do. I'm like, okay. I've passed the whole life, but what we can do, we can do. And the financing, our timing. So, I guess the other question that Jay put to me is that, is there any chance of modifying the TIP district to include those 72 acres? I mean, I know it's up Berlin Street, but you just say, well, throw it out. You don't ask, you don't get. So, does anybody have any questions?
You made reference to this being connected to 302, and I had looked at the maps previously and couldn't figure out how it was connected to 302.
There is a property that Jim Fecto owns, that is right across -- it's not the -- it's kind of right in the middle, on the right-hand side there. And he said that he would grant a right-of-way through that property to connect to 302.
Is that going with this road?
That, yes. That's what they had originally planned. Yeah, that's probably easier to look at it on that map, on the Capitol Heights map.
Or it's number four.
Yeah, number four on the upper right, yeah.
So, just to be clear, you are asking that the city make an $800,000 investment in a piece of property in order to allow this development to go forward, and to provide a city park? I just, we didn't have any kind of introduction, so I just want to lay all that, that that's what the ask is.
Well, it is to provide a city park, yes. And it is to help us be able to acquire land to provide for housing, because housing is a top priority for Montpelier, and green space is also a priority. Well, you can have both, for a lot less than a developer would go in, and want to kind of knock down everything, and put in a couple hundred units, and that would be it. That's what -- that's your other option. Jeff, do you want to say anything? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
In Mr.'s question time, you've got to wait for you.
Other comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead, then.
Some of this depends on enough people being interested in moving into this community. Are you getting good interest?
We've had five original households, and we had a meeting on November 15, to try to introduce this concept in public, and we now have 12. And we haven't marketed this, we haven't gone beyond the original Montpelier downsizing group, so there's just a lot of people who don't even know anything about it. So, we're ready for that. But everybody gave deposits, everybody's ready to go, so, so far's the good.
And I know that you said that this is -- you've looked at a lot of different properties, and this is the one. and this is the one, and I believe that, and at the same time, I'm curious to, to hear what you think about how far it is in terms of walking from downtown and even to get down to the bike path.
It is, it is a walk. It's probably closer to the bike path if you had the public, the access, the right-of-way down to that. But I've also talked to the Transportation Department and Planning, and they said, well, if you can get thirty-two homes down there, we can probably put a bus stop down there. So, there are other transportation options, and especially in the wintertime, and if this is over fifty-five, people are going to go walk into town anyway, even if they were, you know, up savings, if that was even an option. So, that's, that's a challenge. And it's all about the terrain, you know?
Other comments?
And I've talked with Trust for Public Land, I've talked to the Vermont, I'm going to get it down, the Community Loan Fund, the Housing and Conservation Board, and a lot of, and the Vermont Land Trust, and the Land Trust is very interested, TPL is interested. So, we do have interest on that, and the Commission was very interested in having a park on that side of town, because there are a lot of residents out there that really don't have any access to recreation. And so... Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
So, is the idea that the city would buy the entire parcel for eight-hundred thousand dollars and then sell your seven acres or fifteen acres of it back to you to develop, or what's the overall scheme?
Well, Jim had said, Fecto had said that they want to sell the entire parcel at one closing, and what we would do is we would have an agreement with the city that at closing, we would purchase the acreage that would be suitable for, if you say it's two hundred thousand, say, for the, you know, the two parcels there. And then there would be funding from wherever the sources come from. I mean, I look at a ten-million-dollar garage and ninety-nine-thousand-dollar park, and, you know, that's, it's all a matter of what do we want? What do we want as a city? I mean, do we want to have both the green space and the housing? The housing is very challenging, and affordable housing is being created, but there's not a lot of market rate housing, and a lot of us aren't going to qualify for affordable housing, so, and we pay higher tax rate. So, you're going to have a greater taxes coming in, you're going to have, you know, those of us who really need to have smaller homes have smaller homes, opening up the town for being able to have younger families. And there are a number of us that are coming from out of the city, so you're going to be creating more residents that are coming from outside.
Go ahead, Donna.
Did the groups you speak with talk about any financial avenues that they could contribute?
The groups, you mean these groups? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I have talked with them about that.
So, would we all need to sit around the table and talk about the possibility if you got just an interest nod from the City Council without a financial commitment?
Well, I know you can't make a financial commitment at a Wednesday night meeting, but, but it is, it is a conversation. And the Land Trust was going to hopefully be here, they had two commitments, they couldn't be here. I'm just kind of opening the door for the conversation, the big picture kind of thing. This is not a firm proposal. The sketch that Jay did is purely a sketch. It's nothing of a planning nature, or it needs approval, or any of that, but, you know, we're trying to find a way to be able to create the recreation part as well as the residential part. And yes, no, none of us are going to have a million bucks that we're going to go and buy seventy-two acres. None of us are developers.
I'd be interested in working with a coalition of a group.
Oh, terrific.
For sure.
Oh, terrific. Yeah, that would be ideal, so we can pull, there's Roger Christman at TPL, and then, I can't remember the name of the other folks that I've been talking, and keep in mind, I'm just a resident. I'm not an expert on any of this, so you just do what you got to do, and you learn what you got to learn, and try to bring it together.
So, I'm going to jump in here, and then for Rosie. So, just so you know where I'm at, I'm very interested in this. I think it's really interesting, but there are a lot of questions that I have. So, I, I will also say that while I am interested, I'm also very skeptical. And the reason for that, I mean, it feels like an incredibly large investment for sixteen units of housing. I mean, I know that there's pushback to potentially more, but, I mean, we need a lot more housing, and I, I personally would be much more interested in, on the scale of something like a hundred more units. And so, what's, so that's, that's one thing, but then that raises this question for me about, like, what's the right balance? I mean, let's say that we, this, well, let me back up. One question is, is this the right space for a park on this side of the river? Maybe, and with this opportunity, it might be, but I, I think that's a question worth asking. That's number one. Number two, if this is the right spot for a park, then what's the right balance of space for housing and space for park? And, I mean, I would want to actually go up there and, like, you know, check out what we might be potentially buying, right? To, to consider, like, how much of this would be, you know, useful or valuable as a park versus housing, and what's the, what's the right balance there?
In two thousand and seven, I guess it was, Jim did present it, and I guess he had so much pushback from the local neighborhood for two hundred and some odd units.
Yeah.
That it just became unfeasible, it wasn't going to happen for them. So, it's a really trying to weigh, as you say, the balance.
So, that was more than ten years ago, right?
Yeah, he said it was around two thousand and seven.
Okay.
You know? And the recession had something to do with it, too.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. And I, at the very least, it seems like a conversation reopening, like, worth reopening. So, though, at least that's where I am at right now, and the thing is, I, I would guess that to answer those questions, that's going to take more than a month.
Yeah.
And so, I'm a little worried for, you know, for, for your sake, right? Like, if, in order for us to have all the information we might need to make a sound decision, you know, it's, it's going to take more than a month, that, who knows what could change, but that, that feels like the reality to me.
I mean, we said thirty-two units only to try to really keep it down to what was absolutely, you know, necessary for our group, but it doesn't mean that it has to be that.
Yeah.
But you get into the hundreds, and you start talking about the neighbors having a problem with that.
Yeah.
But having a, having a park is, you know, is, is helpful, you know, when it comes to being able to do this. And there is this survey, so I can't imagine that there's going to be any action on the property until the survey is completed to really determine what the boundary of that park is, and that would ultimately be merged with the, with whatever we do on this particular property, so. And I appreciate your time. I know I took more than...
Oh, no, yeah, well, I think Rosie had a question, too.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I mean, I, I would really agree with a lot of what Ann said, and I have been a really strong proponent of a park on this side of the river. However, I spent some time looking at this parcel, and I'm not sure that this park is one that is open to the rest of the Berlin Street neighborhood, because to get there, folks have to, it's quite a steep walk up a hill for most of the folks living on that side of town, and I would be very cautious about this becoming kind of a private park for just one small neighborhood. The wonderful thing about Hubbard Park is that, you know, so many of our neighborhoods border it, and so it is a park for, for a lot of neighborhoods in the town. And I would want, if we were going to make that kind of investment, which this would be, I mean, this is, a park on this scale is going to require more park staff, more maintenance. It's, it's not just the initial outlay, it's also the ongoing maintenance cost. And if we were going to make that kind of investment, it would be very important to me that it was thoroughly accessible to all the folks living in the area and not just one small neighborhood.
Maybe there's a way of looking to see where the other points of accessibility might be.
Exactly, yes. So, that, those are some really critical pieces to me, is if we were to go down this path, making sure that it was accessible from lots of different neighborhoods around there, and so that, that's something I would really want to flag for you.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, sure.
Okay, well, let's keep talking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm assuming there's no further questions? Great, moving on. All right, so the Montpelier Foundation, coming back to us again.
Good evening. Bill, I had sent you some emails.
Can I forward it to them?
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, we got them.
Played telephone tag a bunch of times, we never had a chance to actually hook up. Well, thank you for having us back. We tried to address many of the questions that came out of the meeting, at the last meeting regarding the makeup of the board, also the investments, and there was also a question about, you know, what would the, the people who donated the money, what were their thoughts? And, you know, unfortunately, trying to go back to twenty-five years, some of those don't exist today. It's Vermont National Bank. Lola Aiken was a big donator who's passed away, but the largest donator at the time was the National Life Insurance Company. They gave the foundation twenty-five thousand dollars in Sentinel stock. The circumstances of that were that the, there had been a reappraisal in Montpelier at that time, and National Life's taxes actually went down. And so, Fred Bertrand, who was the president of National Life at the time, said, well, what we're going to do is we're going to take the money that we're not being charged by the city this year, and we're going to give that to the donation, donation to the foundation. So, that's where that twenty-five thousand dollars came from. The, most recently, a large donation came from the estate of Alan Weiss, the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. And I have talked to National Life, they had emailed me and said, no, we don't have an issue with it. Vermont Mutual was also a large donator originally. They expressed that they don't have an issue, and Alan Weiss's son, Stephen Weiss, also sent an email saying that he does not have an issue with the foundation, become a standalone.
Well, I want to thank you for addressing those concerns. I'm, I'm really pleased with the bylaws as they have been, you know, amended, and, so anyway, so I'm, I'm very comfortable supporting this, and I'd love to hear any comments or questions from other people. Go ahead, Donna.
I have one, and it may be how I read it. I didn't understand the non-resident appointment.
Well, the idea was that we have residents in Montpelier, okay, that was easy, but then there's a lot of people that, that don't physically live in Montpelier, but spend the bulk of their time in Montpelier, and as we were trying to increase the membership on the foundation, we thought it would make sense to take people who are really vested in Montpelier, they may not live physically in Montpelier, but are really vested in Montpelier, and also make it available to them to be on the, the foundation.
I guess maybe it was the way it was worded, it talked about would be Montpelier residents depending on whether or not there were two non-residents on the board. It was just, so, so there is some limit, inferred some limit to non-residents.
Correct, yes.
But I didn't read clear to me, but maybe it was just legalese, and I couldn't...
Okay, well, I'll defer to...
And right now, I'm not finding the section. I wrote it in my notes.
Well, is it section four point two qualifications?
Yeah, qualifications.
So, I mean, one, if there's a, if there's just a clarification...
Yes.
Then maybe, I don't know if you have any suggestions there, but, I mean, if that's, if that's all it is. While you're looking for it, Donna, go ahead.
No, no, it, it's right there, and it means what you say, but what it reads is, however, no more than two non-residents who have demonstrated a strong commitment to City Montpelier may be elected. So, it's, who have demonstrated, anyway? It just seems a little worded. Do you look at the sentence for me, that's all, when you get back, otherwise?
Okay, yeah.
All right, Glenn.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just trying to help. I think the sentence makes sense to me, I think, in that it, it's, they all are required to be residents except for the possibility of two, as long as they've demonstrated commitment to.
Right, yeah, as long as...
The mayor points to...
Yeah. And you, and you did a great job on incorporating the social responsible investments. Thank you for that.
I have a suggestion on this point that we've been talking about, which is that as we learned last time, this is a self-perpetuating board, which means the members of the board would be electing new members, and so I think the members who are on the board would be the ones who would be evaluating whether these non-residents have this, a demonstrated commitment to the city. What occurred to me as I was reading this is that there's a broad range between five and eleven members of the board. You could conceivably be in a position where you have, the board consists of two people appointed by the City Council, two non-residents accepted by the board, and only one person who is a resident who was not, who, who was elected on their own right. And so, what occurred to me was that it might make sense that have at least five people on the board who are residents, and then if you want to go beyond five members of the board, that two of the additional members might be non-residents, so that there would always be, they would always be dominated by people who are residents.
Yeah, I think that would be...
So, for that suggestion, are you suggesting specific language, a language change, or is that, or, or shall we just, like, a...
We will incorporate that.
We can incorporate that, okay.
We will incorporate that language.
Got it.
Okay, great, thank you. Making this as simple as possible.
I don't think we need to come back a third...
No, I'm really asking, please.
Oh, come on.
I ran into Paul this morning. It didn't occur to me to talk about this topic. We were talking about the weather.
Okay, further comments? Yes, Rosie?
My concern last time was about, you know, our responsibility to the folks who had donated previously, and I really appreciated you seeking out those members, or those folks, and getting some feedback, so I, I feel more comfortable supporting this with that feedback, and I appreciate that.
Connor?
Yeah, I think if you love something, you got to set it free sometimes, so, appreciate all the work you put into it between the last meeting and now there. It's a volunteer board, so it's not a glamorous job fundraising either, so, you know, I, I think I have confidence you did the right thing, and if you start doing, like, private prison money to build parks and stuff, we could always create a competing entity, I guess, so. I'm there, I'm good.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll move to approve the Montpelier Foundation's bylaws and their request to become an independent public benefit nonprofit corporation.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
That's assuming Jack's changed.
With the condition of the change.
And that's okay, Connor and Donna? Okay. Yes, Ashley?
I just, I'm going to vote no on this. I really struggle when we take sort of public entities and transition them into private entities, and I appreciate that it seems like it's a done deal, it's just, it's a hard no for me. I think that there are lots of nonprofits in the area who partner with the city of Montpelier, and I think that we should leave that work to them, but I understand that it looks like everyone else feels differently, so that's okay.
I'll, I'll just say while we're discussing that I have qualms in that direction, but I think that it is, I do appreciate the work that has been done to change the bylaws, and I think that it's enough for me to support this particular case, for sure. So, thank you for that, and thank you, Ashley, for the, the care.
Consistently no for everything, it feels like, but it's okay.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, all right, moving on.
So, now, mayor falls to you to appoint two people.
That's right, well, so we'll probably do that. Well, let us know when you need us to do that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so the library, up next. All right, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tom Mccone, Executive Director of the Library.
I'm Rachel Muse, Library Trustee appointed by City Council.
Thank you very much for having us on your agenda tonight, and there are a few things in your packet from us, and I, I don't know if you've had a chance to read them all or not, we won't go through everything, but we'll answer questions about anything, or highlight any things you'd like. But there are, two of the things you received are the, are a report that goes in the annual report, and that has a lot of information, and in writing it this year, I really focused on the, on the ways that this serves, that the library serves, I can't remember if people don't have these.
It came as a separate... Yes, who sent it? Was it from you, Sue? I'm trying to... Yeah, from me.
Sue sent it, eight thirty-five this morning.
But when it's not on the agenda, it's always a little cumbersome.
The...
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry that everybody doesn't have it right now, but the, the, I am glad that I tried to reach Jamie yesterday, because, and then I ended up with Jane, because otherwise... that I tried to reach Jamie yesterday because, and then I ended up with Jane, because otherwise you wouldn't have gotten any of it, because I was working with Jamie on this earlier. So, and also the balance sheet for the library, which also goes in the annual report. The, and two other items, an index, just a lot of statistics relating to the library, and then a request relating to petitioning to be on, on the warning. So, we're not gonna go through all of those things, but the two basic things are, you know, Rachel and I would like to answer any questions you have about anything in the documents that we sent, or about operations of the library, library budget, or anything. And then the second thing will be our question relating to petitioning.
Jack.
I got a couple of questions. I think from the, from the index, there were, there are some numbers related to use of computers and use of the Wi-Fi network, and, you know, 303 average weekly use of public computers, 1105 weekly patron use of Wi-Fi. Are those people, or are those hours online?
Oh, those are people. So the 303 are times when you, you come to one of the circulation desks and get a, a slip so you can access one of our computers for an hour. And so those are numbers, that's the adult library and children's library totaled, 303 a week. The 100, the 1,105 access, times that people access Wi-Fi, that's when people bring their own devices and work in the library.
So is it, those are just, that's the number of log-ons?
It's the number of log-ons, and they might be on for hours, they might be on for 10 minutes.
And it could be someone, does it go as far as across the street?
I don't think it does. I don't think it goes beyond our property. It does go on our steps. There are times when we're closed. There'd be times I get there in the morning, and there's somebody on the steps using the Wi-Fi.
And on this similar point, it was, it was confusion, I was, oh, never mind, I see the answer to that. I won't bother with that one. Okay, thank you.
Donna.
I only saw one place that told me the data for Montpelier. And you said around 3,000 had library cards and some 700 kids. In the past, you actually gave us a chart, and one of your, think about an email, I have to open each attachment separately. So the one that's the long narrative, which you say, is your library report. I don't find what we used to get, which was, this is what the city contributes, this is what other towns contribute, this is their percentage of users, this is their percentage of our revenue. Is that available?
That is available. In the five years I've been here, that's not something we've provided, but we can, we can provide that.
Oh, yes, it has, because that's where I got this statistics before, where we were paying like 70% and only 40, 43% of the users. So it was an important report for me.
Yep. The, the city clearly pays a much larger share of the cost of running the library than the towns do, for, for a lot of reasons. And the city, if you figure it on a per capita basis, pays more than twice as much as the towns pay. And there are, the city uses the library enormously more, in terms of the, the children's library. After school, we get some U-32 students who come by, get off the bus at Spring Street and come over. We do. But the vast majority of, of children who use the library are from Montpelier. In the afternoon, we have children walking over from all three schools to use the library. And sometimes it is absolutely wild, and there are just loads and loads of kids, and in good weather, sometimes, and bad weather, they're outside too. But it's both inside and, and outside. It's actually, there is a, a group of parents who are scheduling the meeting at the library in January, because they want to look at the issue of, of where kids are going after school. And it's an issue that we've periodically talked with folks at, at Union Elementary School and the Main Street Middle School about, and it's not their responsibility where the kids go. But, and, and the great majority of kids are great, but sometimes the volume of kids is a real challenge for us. So, but, so the children there is one of the ways, but the, and the, like, for the, the storytimes we have in the morning, it's almost entirely Montpelier families using that. And a lot of them walk over, and, you know, so it's, it's very convenient. The, there is the issue of, the building's a beautiful building. It's a, it's an important building in downtown Montpelier. It matters a real lot to all of us living in Montpelier, and doesn't matter so much to people who are in Callis or Worcester or something. And each of the towns, they have their own buildings that they want to take care of. So as far as the issues of taking care of a building, that matters to us, but in people in the towns, it matters to them to, to maintain their own buildings. We use, in, in the narrative, I gave a lot of examples about, not, it's not just the library services, but, you know, our, our meeting spaces are used by lots and lots of organizations. The great majority of those are Montpelier-based organizations and Montpelier-based groups. And almost all of them are uses that are for free. We have a sliding scale, so if a handful of people want to get together and have a meeting on anything, they can come and reserve a space, it costs them nothing. If they wanted it all day, we'll charge them something. If they want to go a couple hours, it, you know, it's nothing. And then, but when businesses and, and state agencies or, or other agencies want to use a space, we do charge them something. The Democratic, Republican, and progressive parties use our spaces. We charge all of them. Same rate for everybody. But even when Senator Leahy comes, we charge them.
You charged us.
Yes, we charged you. That's right. So the, Senator Leahy, of course, is, if you don't know, he's, he's been a huge supporter of the library forever and a day. It's his childhood library. So, the, another issue for us with, whenever we ask for increases in the towns, one of the things I feel really good about is, for the past three years, we have had all five towns supporting the library. That is a huge challenge, because one of the towns was in and out for 20 years, and only, only supported the library half the time. And it was, we worked really hard, and we still work really hard. We work harder there than anywhere to get the support. We serve Montpelier, and we serve the five towns in Washington Central Supervise Union. To use a U-32 analogy, the U-32 budget, I believe, has never been voted down, going back into the 1970s. And of course, originally, it was just that, it was at a meeting, but it's been, it's been by Australia ballot for many years. There have been years where there've been, in, in one town or another, there've been movements against the budget. But the votes are all pooled. So, so if one town votes against the U-32 budget, it won't make a difference. The U-32 budget will still pass. In our case, we can't ask one of the five towns for an increase. We can't ask four. You know, we, we have to do it equitably. Last year, we asked a 6% increase for everybody. And when we do that, we run the risk, is if we lose one town, we actually have a net loss, and we don't have more revenue, we have less revenue. So it's a real challenge for us. We, out of the five communities, we have two that are solid library supporters, and we have a couple that are mixed, and we have one that's a real challenge. So it's, as far as being able to get a larger share from them, it's, it's really difficult for us, since we have board discussions about, okay, well, how much can we ask and, and still come out ahead?
So my understanding, really, beyond all of this great data, as to why you're here is because you want an indication of whether or not, were the city councils gonna be willing to put you all on the ballot without the otherwise, you know, necessary signatures? So I, I would love to just steer the, the conversation in that direction.
Sure.
And is there anything that you want to say particularly about that, before we open it up to questions?
Sure, and thank you. And that is a crucial point for us. The, in the years when we have not asked for an increase, as far back as I am aware of, the council has always put us on the warning. So what's different this year is we are asking for an increase. So we're asking you to make an exception. It would be an enormous help for us at this time. And in one of the documents, which you may not have all seen yet, we emphasize that, you know, we're working on, in fact, you've, tonight, you approved the, the initial step for, to help us with a $75,000 grant towards a new elevator. It's a project that, that could cost up to $200,000. And it's part of a broader effort with a, a number of building things that we are raising money for. We're very actively working on that right now. We are not gonna come to the city or to any of the towns for any money on that. We've got a complete plan on this, and we're working, been working on this, and we have a consultant working with us. And over the next couple of years, we're very, we're already in good shape, as far as how we're off to a good start on this. But we have to raise a lot of money on that. So one of the things that'll happen is if, if we need to take a month off to petition, it really, it will cost us a lot of money.
Okay, thoughts from the council on this? Connor, go ahead.
What's your mechanism for collecting petition signatures now? Do you canvass, yeah, have it in different stores?
Oh, all of the above.
Yes.
A lot of Watkins at the library, of course. We're lucky, we have close to 700 visitors a day there, so we can capture a lot of Montpelier residents there. But as a trustee, I go door to door. I spend a lot of time standing in the cold outside of the farmer's market. And we, we hit every popular location in town that we can. We hang out at Hunger Mountain Co-op and other locations like that as well.
Other questions? Ashley?
I'm in favor of just putting this on the ballot. I, I utilized my public library a whole lot growing up. We didn't, you know, that, that was sort of a thing that we could do that didn't require money, as long as I returned my books on time. And I, it, it strikes me that the library isn't Montpelier, which I think is really great for the community, because, one, it brings people here, people who may not otherwise have access to the tools and resources that exist at our library, but also because I think it adds to our downtown. I think that it brings people in, especially younger folk after school, and I know that it can be overwhelming, but at least they're at our library. Unfortunately, there have been a few incidents in the last year, one quite serious incident. But I, I believe that this is the kind of thing that our community should be focusing on, is really sort of fostering those opportunities for learning and development, and places for families to be. And, and so for me, this is a huge yes. And I wish that we, I, I hope that the council feels similarly, but I, I just, I, I feel like this is what my role as a city councillor is, is to promote those kinds of things in our community, and, and maybe not so much some, some other ventures.
Thank you.
Jack.
She was, she was, she's a... I totally support this. I think it's, Kellogg Covered Library is, is a tremendous asset to the community. It's recognized as, as a great library. I believe it's, there's only one library in the entire state that has a higher annual circulation than the, than the Kellogg Covered Library. The voting results year after year show it has tremendous support among the voters of Montpelier, and I think we, we should do this.
Donna.
Well, Ashley, I'm gonna be the no. And that's because, in my six years on the board, it's almost every other year you come with an increase. And we make these small, very small organizations who do not get enough funding through the Montpelier Fund...
Community Fund.
Thank you, Community Fund account, do signatures, and they don't have nearly the, the access you do of most, a huge number of voters. So I don't think it's fair to let the big system not do what we ask little systems to do. And that $20,000, I want more housing, I want more public art, I want other police officers. So I think the voters need to say yes to this asking beyond the $350,000 we already have in the budget. So I'm gonna be a no vote. It's not against the library, it's against the process, that you're asking us to cut, shortcut for you.
The total is 350,000?
Pardon?
That 350,000 includes the increase.
I think she was talking about the bond payment, too.
Okay.
Yeah, but we, we have a lot of money in this.
Have that, too.
Want to add at all?
Go ahead, Glenn.
I'm a yes, and if it goes to no, I think I would like to offer my services getting more signatures. I, I understand the, the same process for everyone that Donna's talking about, and I think that, for me, that balances out, partly with what Jack pointed out, and what you point out in the letter, about the, the overwhelming long-term support from the residents for the library. So, I think we can, we can put you on the ballot, personally.
Thank you.
Rosie.
I feel very conflicted, because as a voter, I will sign your petition, and I will vote for, for this, and I, I really believe that library, the library is very important, and the services that it provides to folks all across the spectrum, the socioeconomic spectrum are really important. It is our default day homeless shelter in many communities, and I'm sure in Montpelier as well. And I, so I'm very, this is a good thing. We, I, I believe as a resident that we should put money behind it. However, I'm very cognizant of this process that we have set up, because we have limited resources. And if we say yes to you today about going around this process, how can we then say no to Central Vermont Home and Hospice, who is also a wonderful organization, who does wonderful work, or any of the other wonderful organizations that come to us and, and do have fewer resources to collect the signatures? And I'm, you know, I would be willing to give that one-time yes if it was a one-time yes, but it's not, because everyone else is gonna see, okay, well, we can just ask the council and not have to go do those signatures, and then our system that we've set up is, is broken. So I'm feeling very conflicted about this, and I don't, I, I don't know.
In terms of the one time, this, this is the only time we have asked for this?
Because you're going...
No, I'm sorry.
It's the only time we've asked to be put on the warning, when we've asked for more money?
I'm sorry, I've been here when you've been here before. I can...
Yeah, I think probably before Tom's time, but I, yeah, it's...
I, I have, I have never asked you for this before.
Other thoughts?
I guess what I'm, what I'm struggling with is the public good that this actually serves. Like, literally, every single day, there are 700 people, on average, that walk through the door. And I appreciate that there is a process by which signatures can be collected, but I, I am struggling with this notion that we can spend millions of dollars on something that doesn't benefit local people exclusively, and, and instead benefits another private business entity, and be, and be pushing back about a, a process by which an organization that serves every single person in Montpelier, and, and has a partnership with other communities, and frankly, I mean, while it's disappointing that other communities don't want to fund the library, I cannot imagine being where I sit today as a city council member without my public library. I, I really, it's, it wouldn't have been possible. And, you know, my grandfather, up until a few weeks before he died, frequented the public library, because that was sort of his outing, and, you know, being, being able to read things that in large print, and, and having access to those things was a social event for him. And at, you know, at 91, that, that was a big thing. And I remember going to Story Hour with him when I was a child, because that's what there was to do. And, and so to me, I, you know, I appreciate that there is a process, but this, to me, is, is an extension of city services, because you serve every resident regardless of income, regardless of ability to pay for play. And, and so I just, I feel like that's an important distinction to make.
Jack.
I think Donna raised a good point, in general, which was, how do we fund city services? And tonight isn't really the night to do it, but I really had questions ever since it was created, about having the, the Montpelier City Foundation be the, be sort of the clearing house for...
Community Foundation?
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation.
Be the clearinghouse for fund, funding requests, and cutting people off the, off the... the, off the ballot the way it was before. So I think that's a conversation to have. And I'm not sure if that's what you were getting at, but-
We're not going to say yes to all of our departments for their increases, so why should we say yes to this?
Yeah, and, and we're not saying yes to this, we're providing an opportunity for the voters to say yes. But there we are.
Uh, Tom, go ahead.
May I have one more thing? Thank you very much for your comments and I, and I appreciate them very much, the, even the ones that are, have concerns about this. The number one reason I'm asking for an exception this time around is we have had a number of unanticipated expenses in the past year. So we had to find ways to cover those things. We reduced our evening hours year-round, but that started during the summer. We reduced the evening hours and we reduced the Saturday hours. We're not going to do that again, you know. And in other tight years, we reduce how much money we spend on technology or what, or money that we spend on buying books or DVDs or that we provide for programming or other areas. And we, very regularly, going back for 20 years, dealing with a very tight budget, the library has constantly underfunded maintenance of the building. That has really caught up to us very badly. I mean, that's why we had big expenses in this past year. It's because it's always been underfunded. So we have started a process, we've been working on this for a couple of years to turn this around. Number one, to get caught up on some of these needs. We have our elevator's 45 years old. It's going to die at any time. We need to, we want to be able to schedule a replacement of the, not the car itself, but the mechanisms and the controls. We want to schedule that because when, when it's out, we'll be, the elevator will be down for up to two months. If it's not scheduled and if it just, if we just wait until it dies, well, then we're looking at four months or longer of not having an elevator. So, but we have been very seriously, Donna, working on changing how this is done. We have plans, you know, we've outlined what the needs are in the building, short-term, long-term, building maintenance issues. We talk about the big things like the roof and the elevator and, and the windows which we're having done right now. We're working on applying for grants for these things as much as we can. We're in the process of meeting with, a process we started about three months ago, meeting with people who have been generous to the library in the past and, and asking them, you know, this is not, it's a quiet phase of this campaign, to, to get us going. Because before you go public with a, a campaign, you want to raise like two-thirds of it, two-thirds of the money. So that's where we are right now. We're working on that phase. If we need to stop that for a month, my biggest concern is we have a half a dozen trustees and five out of the six of them are from Montpelier who are very actively working on meeting with donors. If we have to petition, most of them are going to be petitioning for a month and not meeting with donors. And we're, we're just, we're just on a roll right now. So my reason for asking for an exception really is I'd like to not lose the momentum that we have going on that. We won't get to as many people. It's, it's not that it will be delayed, it'll be that, you know, we, we have a, a long list and we will just run out of time. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Yeah. So I just want to add a little bit here, which is, I also feel very conflicted about this because of the, the process issues around the, really the, the rule of thumb, I guess, that we've had in previous councils, which was that, you know, as long as the budget was the same, then we didn't, it would require that, you know, you have the, you know, go out and get signatures. To be totally honest, I'm not sure that that's my rule of thumb. Like, I'm not sure that I, I want that to be the rule of thumb. I mean, that, that idea of that, like, as long as you don't increase your budget, then we'll just put it on the ballot for you, that's not a part of the, the rule. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that was just something, that was a tool that the council used to try to make it equitable. And I do want to find some way to make it equitable, but I'm not sure that that's it for me. And so while I am in, in limbo as to what my, what like, what my philosophy is about that, I'm, I'm willing to support it. Which I realize is maybe not, you know, like, I probably should have a rule of thumb figured out by now, but I don't. But in any case.
The, the history on this, not, not library specifically, because back when we had all the art issues on the ballot, the council policy was if it's the same amount as the prior year, we'll put you on the ballot. If you want an increase, you've got to petition for the entire amount. So it was, you know, okay, if you want more money, you've got to work a little harder for it. When the Community Fund came into place, most of those items that had been on the ballot went to the Community Fund, leaving only the library essentially as the outlier that was in that same old situation. Because the library's funding was so much greater than the Community Fund, we just kept them outside. And, and so the, the policy continued with them. If you want an increase, you consider it. With the Community Fund, it is different. People have the opportunity to apply for the Community Fund, but if they don't get money from that process, they have the option of, of doing so. Now, so last year, you had Central Vermont Home Hospice at 20,000, People's Health and Wellness Clinic at 2,000, and Good Samaritan Haven at 4,000, who were not funded through the Community Fund, who all were required to petition to be on the ballot. And I do recall at least one of those agencies did make a plea to the council because they had missed the deadline or something like that and the council still chose. So that was, that's the history, but the, the Community Fund is a little different than the library. And a lot of it has always been this sort of, how do you handle them? So it's, it's, that's, it's a precedent in, in practice. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but that's how we got to be where we are.
Uh, Glenn?
Just to follow up with Bill, one of the notes in here is that with the other towns, when you petition, you need 5% of the registered voters. With Montpelier, you need 10.
That's correct.
Is that part of the-
That's in the charter.
Okay.
No matter how big you are.
Okay, well, any further comments on this? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I would move that we approve the library's request to be added to the ballot with the projected increase, which I think puts it at $350,000.
$350,471.
That dollar amount.
The increase is only $19,838. It's not $350,000 increase, just to be clear.
The total, the total.
But for those that are listening.
And Jack has seconded. Further discussion?
I think I'll support it, just as long as we emphasize it is an exception. It's a capacity issue this year for you folks. And I'd say we would afford other groups who came in and had other such issues the same opportunity to come in and ask us, so I would support it.
Thank you.
Danger, danger.
Fair enough. Uh, Glenn?
I also just want to take this opportunity to apologize for the books that my dog has been eating.
Well, you're paying for them, right?
And apologize.
I, I guess I would also just encourage us to consider beyond this instance, what should or should not trigger an except, an exception to the petition rule? There, there probably is, well, there probably is, there are, there are groups that we would, we would turn down and what would that look like? So I encourage you all to do some thinking about that. I'm, I'm like talking to myself.
Didn't they turn down Home Health last year?
I don't remember.
Did they have their signatures?
We made them get signatures.
Yeah.
And Good Samaritan and-
Good Samaritan, some really small-
People's Health and Wellness.
Yeah, no, it's true, it's true.
Just vote.
Okay, fair enough. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I think it passed. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And, all right, moving on. Cool, all right, so-
Can we take a break?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to be kicking back up again at seven, how long do you want? Seven?
I'll defer to you.
7:55?
A lifetime.
7:55, that's my goal.
I'm sorry.
Before we get started with the next item, I just want to just add, tag on one thing to the conversation we just had, which is that I think we, it would probably be good for us to have a conversation about our policy around when do we exempt people from needing to get petitions when there's not someone in front of us asking for that. And so I was just talking with Bill about, let's put that on as an agenda item, you know, to talk about what is our, what is this group's policy, you know, want to be sometime in like June. I know, I think Rosie, you won't be here, but, you know, that'll be the, the new council and-
I'll give you some comments.
Yeah, please do. But that, that way, we, you know, we can have that history out there and, you know, you know, thoughtful conversation prior to meeting to use it. So anyway, just wanted to make a note of that. Cool, moving on, sprinkler ordinance.
This is the second reading of the ordinance you reviewed at the last meeting, which came out of the group that Rosie and Glenn worked with and the variance committee. And I think this is, just moving this forward in the process.
So I just want to officially open the public hearing, doing that. Comments from council? Cut, Jack?
I think we should just do this quickly.
Great. Comments from the public? No? Okay. All four of you. Okay, any other further questions? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing then. And so this being the end of the second hearing, I think we get to, I'm not looking at the language, but yeah, I think we need to, some kind of a motion to adopt this language.
I move that we adopt the language as proposed.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, okay, thank you.
Done yet?
This is the second sprinkler ordinance, this is the one we discussed at the last meeting, basically to mirror the state language regarding parking garage requirements. And so we drafted, Chief and I drafted the language we have, pretty simple, just reflecting the state code.
Yeah, the language I have in front of you was right out of NFPA 1.
Great. Uh, Jack?
Open the public hearing.
Oh, yep, yep, so I'm going to officially open the public hearing on this particular set of changes. Further comments? Okay, public? Nope? Okay, great, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Sorry, I was reading.
Oh, okay, question, comment?
I just wanted to give the, the fire chief an opportunity to share whether you feel this is a good thing or-
I do, we, we took a look at it. When we, when Chris and I started reviewing the parking garage, we realized that the parking garage falls under, it's a new public building. But when we started taking a look at it, we realized that that probably didn't make a lot of sense. And then we looked at NFPA 1 and we looked at the fire code, the state fire code, and realized that it's not required in, for a, as the wording says, for a freestanding, open parking structure. That, you know, it's basically four levels of parking lot is what it is. So I reached out around the state to fire chiefs in St. Albans, Burlington, South Burlington and Brattleboro that have these structures and they, and they follow NFPA 1. Three weeks ago, at a New England Fire Chiefs meeting, I reached out to the state of Rhode Island and Connecticut, and they also only require in freestanding, open parking structures, they follow NFPA 1 also. Which does require, this building will be required to have a standpipe system in it. For those who aren't familiar, a standpipe system is just basically a six-inch water main that runs up through each stairwell. And at each landing, there's a place where we can attach a fire hose and turn it on and have water available. That is required under NFPA 1. So this structure will have that. Or any freestanding, open parking structure would be required to have that. So, so I do support this. Yes.
It seems obvious, but I, I assume there's room to interpret what freestanding means. Like, I assume that the city center building parking ramp is not considered freestanding because it's attached directly to the building.
Correct, and that is a sprinkled, that, that parking garage has sprinklers.
And I'm also, though, picturing the parking garage up in Burlington that was adjacent to the mall downtown where there were, at a couple of different levels, there were direct connections going into entrance doors of, of the building. Would that be considered freestanding on this?
No, no.
Okay, is, is any connection, any physical connection?
Any connection, yeah. And any underground or below, below grade parking by NFPA would, would require sprinklers also.
Okay.
But a free, it has to be a completely freestanding, separate building.
Free, thanks.
Donna?
Did the, our current parking structure have that in their blueprints? What you're saying is required.
The sprinkler system?
Not the sprinkler system, but what you said, the standing pipe in the stairwells.
Standpipe, yes.
They already had that, good.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, the architect knew, he, he knew the, the code. He knew it was required, yeah.
Great, further comments? Okay, I've already closed the public hearing. So we're going to set the second reading for next week. Do you, do you think we need a motion for that?
I would move that we set the second public hearing for, is next week enough time?
Yeah.
It is, okay. I would move that we set it for our next meeting on December 19th.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And some parking ordinance changes. Parking. Still on the agenda. Thank you, Tom.
Good evening. Moving right along.
Moving right along.
So I'm Tom McCardle, excuse me, Public Works Director, and presenting four parking ordinance recommendations. So we have a public hearing, it's the first public hearing to enact an ordinance change.
I'm going to interrupt you to open the public hearing. Carry on.
Thank you. We did notify all the interested parties, we believe we did, through mailings, posting on the website and newspaper. Have not had really any comments. They're not tremendously impactful. The streets that are involved, I'll go through them, Mathieu Terrace is pretty narrow, not wide enough to support on-street parking, primarily legislative session issues. So we don't have a lot of parking demand there, but when we do, we've had to post it with, with some signs under police order. That's a prohibition on both sides. Guernsey Avenue, same sort of thing, rarely visitors of the street. Delivery vehicles as well, need to accommodate them. That will be allowed on one side, I believe is the way we did this one, with some intersection clearance. Berry Streets, this kind of goes back to the old days when there was a market there. We've, we've had a limited parking, short-term parking here in the past. It was taken, it was removed and now it's back again. So it's consistent with city practice to, to address that. Police have identified long-term parking there, so this is kind of the overflow parking, unmetered parking in this area, taken up by long-term parkers. So this will help with business. And the last one is just truly a housekeeping matter. Baldwin Street was modified through a project, taking out several irregularities. It's a consistent width. We don't need the seasonal change and it's now included in the winter parking ban under the event-based ordinance. So that's just a brief summary of the four ordinances and if you have questions.
Ashley?
So with regard to the Berry Street change, I'm just curious, why 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM? Because I don't think that we have any parking enforcement that late. I mean, I know law enforcement can, can write the ticket, it just seems like if all the other parking goes into effect at 8:00 AM, I mean, I understand maybe 7:00 AM because I think the- effect at 8:00 AM, I mean, I understand maybe 7:00 AM, because I think the bakery may open at 7:00 AM, but after work, I mean, if you're a resident in that area, and full disclosure, I used to live diagonally across the street from there and sometimes had to park on Berry Street. It, I appreciate that it would be desirable, see someone, I mean, somewhere 6:00 AM came from, but you don't have to move your car from the city lot if you have to park there until, I believe, 7:00 AM, is that right, or 8:00 AM?
Seven.
If there's a parking ban. So, I guess my request would be that either we change those hours, you know, from, from maybe 7:00 to, what's the parking meter, 5?
Can I interrupt you?
I appreciate that you asked, my friend. Yes, feel free. I really appreciate the ask. You're the first person all week who asks. They can interrupt me.
Well, I want to stop you because the, the way I read that, and I appreciate your interpretation, but the way I read that, it applies to the, specifically to the parking at 203 to 5 and 207 Berry Street, where that 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM restriction applies. This is a separate, and I can see why you would interpret it that way. It wasn't intended to be that. I added it to Berry Street because we already had a Berry Street section. Perhaps a better move would be to either add the time to that as being a time period that council suggests, or create its own section so that it's separated from that. But that, that 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM applies to the other piece, not this one, the new one.
Hold on. I don't know that I followed you.
Reading the, that's one sentence, 15-minute limited parking.
Yes, is also provided.
Two, so situated at this location from 9:00 AM to, or 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Then, it's a new sentence, 15-minute limited parking for the two spaces at 78 Berry Street, where no time period during the day is, applies. So, it's a separate sentence. It's, the way it's structured, I can see why that would be inter, be confusing.
Yeah. I just, I, I'm fine with, with making it like during business hours limited. It just strikes me that having to get up, and as someone who's lived in Montpelier and has had to get up at the wee hours, I, that was hard to find a replacement for what I wanted to say. It's, you know, when it's like negative 10 degrees out and you have to go move your car at 5:45, there is nothing worse than the sight of me going to move my car at 5:45 and it's negative 10 out. And so, I just, I want to be mindful that the council also exempted that area from having required parking in the zoning. And so, there are lots of units in that area that don't have parking, and residents need those spots. And I appreciate that we need to be mindful of business operations, too. So, I would just ask that we, we change those hours to be more in line with other city areas.
Again, it doesn't apply to the new section, but the way this reads is that this particular 15-minute limitation applies only during that time. So, then the limitation goes away.
Right.
You'd be able to leave your vehicle after 9:00 PM through to 6:00 AM.
I know, but that's the problem.
With no 15-minute restriction.
No, I know. But what I'm saying is 6:00 AM is awfully early for that to begin.
Yes, that is.
And then, 9:00 PM is awfully late for that to end, when the business closes, I think at 2:00 or maybe 3:00 at the latest, 4:00 at the latest?
So, I could offer a suggestion. But Jack, you had to do something.
Is, just to understand what's going on here, in this section A, that first sentence going through 9:00 PM is what's already in the ordinance?
That's correct. That's already there.
And then, the bold and italic is only the new stuff?
That's the new.
Okay.
So, I think what Ashley, Councilor Hill was suggesting is that we alter the existing ordinance to, say, 7:00 AM.
To like 6:00 PM, or 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM, or just something, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me. As someone who lived there, the businesses are closed.
So, we warned this as a restriction specific to
Those spots.
This address, not, not alteration to an existing ordinance that affects those. So, I'm not sure if it would require a new public hearing, first reading on a restriction, or if the council has a prerogative to alter something that was not on your agenda.
I think you could, as long as we notice people for the second reading of the change of intent, I think they can do that.
Okay, so you're...
Can I ask you a question, Tom?
Sure.
What are your other meters? What time are they in our ordinance? Are they listed in our ordinance, a time that they're affected?
I don't know offhand. I believe the parking enforcement begins on, as far as the meter patrol begins at about 8:00.
Yeah, it's 8:00 to 5:00 for parking meters.
Right.
Right, but for other things, so I thought you started earlier because patrol can came by.
That's right.
And get people to move.
7:00 AM is when...
It's, it's not just by the foot trap, foot patrol.
That's correct.
It would be good to have a consistent with what the other ones say, I think.
You are perhaps right. That, again, wasn't the intent of this ordinance, but perhaps there is some other housecleaning that needs to be done. I think it's, if I understand what you're saying correctly. So, I don't know what the date of this. This goes back quite a ways.
Great. I think we have a commentary question.
Since this is a public hearing, I live right off that street, and I don't really know what meters or what, and I'm, in general, I assume no one else does. She, Councilor Hill's really well put what my concerns would be, but I prefer it to just be consistent. And so, I just wanted to have a second voice for that. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is not a metered area. This is referenced to, but I understand the point.
Yeah. Great. I don't want to have to wake up. That's really...
I don't blame you.
Listen, I totally get it. I have been that person, like getting out there first thing. It's not a pretty sight for anyone.
Where is 203? Is that down near the market?
It's down, I, so, so it's...
82 is where we're at, at Nelson Street, so it would be, I'm thinking it's near the...
The little convenience store.
That's what I'm wondering, right.
I'm pretty sure that's where it is, because I was at 178, and then that was Kitty Corner from there, and then...
They've had a 15, and it could be that they're open.
It may have dated back when they were open at 6:00.
I think that they are open later, although I don't know if it's 9:00.
Yeah, but I think they were at the time. That's what was the origin of that, in that one space.
I think 207 to 209 is in front of the Berry Street Market.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Just to catch it up, okay.
So, to be clear, you, your suggestion is that we change that to 7:00 AM?
Yes.
And that the section, the, that is actually worn for 78 Berry, to 82 Berry Street, that we include a time?
Yes.
Consistent with the other?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm fond of things being predictable and easy to read.
According to... So, 7:00 AM to?
6:00 PM?
Assuming that that's what the...
I don't know what the bakery's hours are, but...
Closes at 1:30 on weekdays, 2:00 on weekends.
But I think having it consistent with other, like, I mean, if you stop traffic and, or parking enforcement at 6:00?
We will hear from the market if they're going to, if it's, if they're, if the market is open till af- after 6:00 or whatever, we'll hear from them, because they are pretty vocal about this change when they...
So, typically, these hours do...
If they're open late, we might want to...
On the restrictions that support a, or short-term parking for a specific business, it is, it does coincide directly with their hours. So, that's why I'm thinking it probably goes with the market with those times, and then it should match the bakery's hours. So, we'll find out what that is.
I don't know who else is looking on Google Maps, but it says 10 to 8:00 right now for the market.
For the market?
So, they've changed. And that's not uncommon. That's one of the issues with these restrictions, I guess, is that, that once they're in the books, they're here for, for a long, long time, so.
Okay, so, oh, yeah, go ahead, Ashley.
I have an unrelated comment now. As someone who lives very close to the elementary school, I've seen lots of folks try to take that shortcut that we all used to take and get stopped by the gate. If there is any way that that can be signed on both sides, like street closed, because I watch people all the time, like come in, you know, because their GPS will tell us to turn down there, and then they're trying to turn around in the middle of the road. It's not on here. It's not an ordinance change that needs to happen, but given the snow that is piling up and the number of people that I've seen just making that sort of 18-point turnaround back up to, back up to, towards, you know...
So, you're talking about Park Avenue and Hubbard Street?
Yes. No, I know, but people turn down there now, thinking that it's open. Right. People don't realize. I watch people do it all the time. But it just, if there's something...
It is one way.
Something that says like...
But we, we change that to two-way to allow, because that section is closed.
Right.
Because people need to get to that.
Just so the residents there can get in and out.
Right, but if there was something...
So, I think what we need, road closed ahead, or street closed ahead.
Yes, exactly. Just something, because sometimes you can't even see the fence.
Or no outlet.
Right, no outlet, something. Just, you can't see the fence always until you're almost on it. And so, people have just kind of been going, and then all of a sudden, like, whoops.
Got it. Good suggestion. Thank you.
So, do you have enough information for coming back to us?
As long as you're comfortable with us adding the change for whatever the bakery is, and we'll leave that to, now, there's a, I suppose there's a way so that this can go, be eliminated, such that wording is added, that when the business closes, this ordinance terminates, or ceases to exist?
Business has changed. I don't think we can do an ordinance to, I don't think we should do an ordinance totally based on one business hours. We should be at least covering them, but maybe a little bit over.
That's, that's another way of doing it. It could always be a business there. There was a business there before. I don't know why it was rescinded, and then, so that's, that's another approach.
Seven to nine is...
Seven to nine would be, should cover it, right?
Glenn?
Yeah, this just seems like a really good opportunity to keep piling on more, more things. Thanks, Tom, for showing up.
I'm your sounding board.
The, all of the ordinance, the parking changes have reminded me that a neighbor of mine on Prospect Street has asked me to suggest that we limit parking on Prospect because of similar reasons to what's stated here. We've had a bit of a change in use over the last few years. More people are Airbnb-ing their homes or parts of them, and, and we have more cars on the road than we used to, and it's starting to get tight in a couple of spots. So, I don't know if you've already looked at it recently, or if you would be willing to take a second look along this way, but I think that would be great.
I have not looked at it. I'm not aware that that is. So, what is specifically the concern in the specific area?
Yeah, so...
Perhaps you could, you could send me a note
Yeah, yeah.
About that, and I would, these reviews are not just public works. It includes fire and, and police, fire on public safety access and police under enforcement. And so, we kind of work together on that.
And that's the basic...
Send an email that I can loop everybody in.
I'll do that.
So, you, you'll follow up on that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments?
So, I just want to be clear what, I want to make sure all the business owners and all the residents get adequate notice, and I'm not sure that we've been very clear about what we're planning to do, so that they get adequately noticed for next time.
That's a good point.
What, I feel like we need to give Tom some more concrete language, so that he can then notice the people who would be impacted.
Tom, what do you feel like is your direction right now?
The alteration to the, the existing section, we would notify the, there's a few businesses there, so each of them would receive that notice, and, as well as the adjoining owners.
Notice for what?
The, they would receive, what we send is the full memo, the package.
But the question is, what's the change? What?
What are you thinking about is the change?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought it was more the manner of delivery. The, so, the existing section for 15-minute limited parking would be revised from 6:00 AM as the start time to 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The proposed new language would also be, would be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So, both, both sections would have the time restriction included.
Does that seem adequate to you there, Ashley? Okay. Okay. Everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, unless there's further comments. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I think we need a motion regarding the second hearing.
I'd move that we set this for a second reading at next, at the next meeting.
Next week.
On December 19th.
I'll second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And thank you for asking about interrupting.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, we have a bit of an update on the North Branch.
Sure, so this is just a follow-up to a message I sent you earlier, and I got a copy for you. So, I, you know, I can go through it if you, if you'd like. We, at our last meeting, we had a discussion about...
It's okay.
I need this now, but I'll hand it to you when I'm done.
Great question.
Just want to refer to it, that I will hand it to you. So, at the last meeting, we talked about a process to look at options for the properties on the north side of the, or the east side, excuse me, of the North Branch, the three properties that the city owns or has an interest in. And I was asked to put together a working group to look at that, and I've made some effort, talked to some people, and have, I think, assembled a group. I haven't actually reached out to, but I, I think we have a structure of who we might get around the table to look at this. The first place I wanted to start was with our funding sources to see what, if any, restrictions we had. And, and there are some. So, I tried to articulate those as best I could. As I said, I ran this by the state and federal people I met, and they both said, yes, this accurately reflects our conversation. Because we've had issues in the past where we've had a conversation, and that's, you didn't understand what we told you, so. Anyway, I think the main issue is that we don't, you know, while the city owns those three properties, we purchase them with federal money, and so therefore, there's an ongoing federal interest in the use of the properties, and that they were purchased for this specific project, the One Taylor Project, and for transportation and transit uses. One, one of the lots, and this is partially at our request because of our prior plans, has been declared nonessential, and, and you're right, they are correct. We could build a road around that lot and not necessarily need the former TKS lot. That's the parking lot next to the drawing board, not where Montpelier Beverage was, but the parking lot next to it. And so, they are expecting reimbursement for that. That was an issue for us, because we planned to sell the combined new property, and that's how that was going to be addressed, and that's how they understood it. So, we'd never, they'd never really articulated that clearly. So, and in addition, as you know, they provided additional funding to our project. And again, they were clear, they agreed that it was not conditioned on the sale. However, I know I certainly said, and you know, you're going to get money from the sale of the property. So, you know, it was definitely part of the conversation. And then, the, yeah, so I think it's all, it's all laid out. So, the question is, there may well be some, there almost certainly will be some financial obligation to using these properties for something other than the way they're properly designed, that currently designed, not properly designed. And so, would be the cost of a park. So, my only question was, before we continued forming a committee and a group, which was your direction last time, was just to make sure you had seen this information, and that if you wanted to change course or do anything different, you could. And if you don't, we'll just continue. But I wanted to be sure that everyone was doing this with full, full knowledge of what is out there. I did have a one follow-up communication with Vitrant's official, and he did, basically saying how soon would we need to pay back the money, even if we decided to go. And he said, probably we could do it up to two years. So, just, but no more than that.
So, you're, the cost, if we wanted to have total control, is $304,000, or there's an additional, I didn't quite follow all the different financial impacts.
Well, it's a little complicated in that the, the three lots we bought have since been converted to two, and that's a subdivision that's already happened, and they now exist as two lots. So, so what we purchased each individual from is kind of different. So, the appraisal for the new, what I call Lot 2, the combination of mostly the TKS... the appraisal for the new, what I call Lot Two, the combination of mostly the TKS lot and part of the Association for the Blind Law in the back, what we were going to sell, that was appraised at $380,000 a couple of years ago. And that is what we were going to be paid by the Moat Trust to purchase. And we bought the land for $360,000. The state then can take that $380,000 and match federal funds so that they can add to their transportation purchase. So that becomes a 20% match for them. So that's worth about 1.2 million to the state. So it's not chump change. They want it back. They recognize that we made, we paid 20% of that when we bought the property. So if they were to sell it to, you know, a private seller, they would not get the full $380,000 or whatever. We'd have to do a new appraisal, first of all, and come up with a new value. If, but the city would get a 20% discount off of that because we spent 20% buying it. So that's the recognition. So at the most recent appraisal for $380,000, $304 is 80% of that. So that would be, that would clean out all federal rights for that new parcel. You know, we could argue that, well, we only want to buy the rights out of the smaller parcel and see where that goes. But that would be certainly unequivocally a clean way to, to do that. But, you know, we'd have to.
And if we do that, we don't also owe the state money?
The state and feds are one of the same.
Okay.
So VTRN acts as the agent for Federal Highway. And, but the interesting thing about this is that even though it was paid for with federal money, it goes back to the state as state money, which they can then use to match more federal money.
All right.
Circle is that.
Right. Otherwise, they, so the part I didn't really get into here because it was just long, but just so people are clear, when they've determined something is non-essential or surplus property, you know, if we don't do anything, they will then seek to dispose of it and they will put it out to bid, to top bidder. And then the other thing, the next thing they do is see if any state agency wants it and give it to them. And then they would go and come to the city. So there is a, you know, a backhanded way in which if nobody bid on it privately and nobody from the state wanted it, then the city could possibly get it anyways, surplus property. But it's, 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 you know, it's how many times you get through waivers, right, before you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. One more question I had was, so right now they've deemed it not.
Non-essential.
If we were to do a transportation-related thing, such as one of the options we kind of mentioned last time was rather than doing a building or a green space, but putting parking there and removing parking from Berry Street in order to make that last connection of a bike path or the multimodal path on Berry Street, to me, that's a transportation-related item. Could we get them to?
Possibly.
Change their determination.
I raised that issue and said, you know, they said, number one, it would have to be open to the public. So it couldn't be, you know, private parking spaces for designated for an entity. And, you know, they would, part of the issue they have, and I, you know, I get this, they're not, actually, they've been extraordinarily cooperative. I want to actually give a shout out to VTRN's and Federal Highway because, you know, we asked them to put this all together for us so we could sell this in the first place. And they were extremely helpful. And now they get that, we're revisiting it and they're trying to, they've been great about telling me what the rules are. But the funding was for the One Taylor project. And it was for, this part was basically to put a bike path in and to put a road in. And, and that, that's the sort of federal transportation interest. So, you know, they've got to somehow make sure that whatever they spend money on is consistent with that grant. And essentially, they said, you know, you, you could put the bike in, path in and you could still put the road in without having to have touched that TKS property. So it's not necessarily essential to your bike path project. So somehow we'd have to get them to link that and say, well, it's parking for the bike path project. So, you know, I, I, I can't rule it out 100%, but I wouldn't bank on it either.
Donna. So I'd call your number three on the backside of your memo. You talk about the easiest, the next easiest, and a more complicated path is to subdivide the two into a smaller building space. And then you go on about then buying or selling out. I mean, I'd like to explore that. I don't know if we have time to. So how much time do you think it would be to approach them about number three, that option more complicated?
We've got competing timeframes here. And this is where it really gets dicey. Because states can have their own process. If we were to subdivide this, we need to go through our own subdivision process and do that to create lots and go through our own development review board and draw up the subdivision plan and all that. We don't, we can't just subdivide it like, okay, we did it tonight. And then there's, you know, there are existing permits for this lot. So anything that we change it to, whether it's parking or open park or anything else, we're going to need to get revised permits for that. So that's a whole, that whole sort of regulatory and funding, you know, funding source. At the other hand, we've got contractors who are saying, you know, we need to know what we're building soon, as soon as possible. Because we've got to order materials, we're going to be, you know, we're, we're coming in. Fortunately, the timing of the winter is they've, they've got to put a storm drain in and that kind of thing, which they need to do no matter what. So they're going to get that all finished and then button that up. But, you know, so, so in a perfect world, we have whatever it is we want to do, all of our permits lined up and all of our, our funding source issues clear in time to tell them what to do in a couple of months. So, you know, it's fast. We gotta, we gotta decide quickly.
Do you think that's still realistic? I mean, my impression is that any of these options takes more time unless we just don't do anything.
Well, I mean, we have to do something because we've got to build a road some.
Right. Well, and so in a certain sense, there's like, the, I think of it as like, there's, there's the long-term vision and then there's the what's happening in May kind of vision.
I guess, one thing we could do would be, is just build the road where it's designed and not build the rest of it. You know, the parking spaces until we sort that out. And then we will have at least done that part of it.
Yeah.
We know we've got a couple of years before we have to pay that, the other interest.
Right.
I mean, that might be one option. But that's going to put the road closer to the river than I think people want.
Donna, do you have anything further?
Well, any modification of what's there to even move towards a little more green space between the bike path and the river is going to obstruct what's currently planned.
Right.
There's no way to just slightly modify what they're planning to do to get closer to this.
Well, so it really, it all, you know, this all works together. So like I said, if we built the road where it was, that's going to take out a whole bank of parking, which is going to create more green space on the river. So it's not, you know, it's not completely changing that. The other piece is, you know, we.
Can you, I didn't follow that.
Well, so right now, the, the plan calls for a road to go through, but then there's parking, I'm going to say to the left of it, on the river side of it, you know, whole bank of parking. And actually, this whole conversation started with a simple request of can you take out that bank of parking? That was, that was where we began. We said, sure, we can probably do that. I might be able to do that. And now it has turned into, let's redesign this whole lot. So, I mean, it's been evolving. So if we were to build the road as designed and leave the rest open, then we could maybe then figure out what we're going to do with the rest of it. It would create more green space. I mean, I know ideally they'd like the road to be moved even further away. The issue that comes up is if, if selling this for a private use is in, one of the things that we need to understand is how important the parking is onsite there. And I asked, actually asked Laura from MDC to see if she could research that because we didn't have the capacity and talked to some of the developers. And, you know, I did speak with the folks that were involved in the prior project and they said they could not have gotten financed if they did not have, if they were not controlling the onsite parking. And the other piece, which I, you know, again, we can accept this or not and agree with it or not. But the other piece is that the cost of building a new building requires someone to get top of the market lease rate, just to get a return. And if we then have to charge people, if they then have to say, and you're paying to be in the parking garage across the way on top of your top of the market lease, it becomes less attractive to potential tenants or office tenants and those kinds of things. Whereas they say, well, you got to pay, I don't know what that lease rate is, so I'm making this up. This isn't an official, you know, you got to pay $25 a square foot, but you get parking comes with it right there next to your building. And they say, oh, okay, well, that's worth the extra money because I've got this beautiful brand-new office and it's convenient. So, you know, if, if we're, if we're going to hold the option open for development there, then we also want to be careful that we don't do anything that is going to stop that, you know, impede that. So we're trying to, you know, have it both ways, I think, until we make a firm decision. I don't have the best advice. And like I said, I'm happy to continue a process talking with people, but I felt like, you know, this was new information from the last time we talked and it was substantive and that you all ought to kick it around.
Rosie, I had a couple more questions. One is if we don't sell it for the full appraised value, are we on the hook for the difference?
Yes.
To pay back?
In fact, we don't really have that choice.
Well, what I'm wondering is if, if it was a less desirable, because we took the parking away, if it's a less desirable lot, somebody bids less money.
Well, and I think that's why, I think.
Do we have to pay the difference back?
Well, that's, you know, the very first bullets is any changes in the current plans have to review and approve by VTRN. So they could conceivably say.
You're not going to get the money.
You can't change that parking because you're devaluing the property. And they have a process which they use, which we would follow for selling property. And it, you know, they get an appraisal and they put it out at that and then they take bids. We are allowed, I think, to have some view. We talked about this a little bit about what, you know, is it just highest bidder or is it somebody that comes in with a proposal for what they want? You know, I mean, if we bought it out, then we could make up our own rules. But, but yeah, no, they're, you know, they're saying, yeah, this is what you, what we're expecting.
And then my other question is, do we have the ability to put any deed restrictions on the property? I know we talked about it being more desirable to some folks that it be housing rather than high-end office space or.
So VTRN's, so the, the deal that we had with Moat and the purchase and sale that we had right up until closing day called for the city to retain the rights to have housing above the parking lot. So we had the air rights to build that. I mean, obviously not the city ourselves, but to negotiate that as long as, obviously that new housing wouldn't be able to use the parking down below because it would be. And so, and, and the state was aware that that was in that deal.
So that's effectively a deed restriction.
Well, it was in that deal. It's not now necessarily, but they knew that that was part. And I, I believe that was factored in, in the appraisal. That is listed in the appraisal. That is a, that and the, you know, the rule of permanent ease of the road crossing and all that is part of the value of the property. It's not just an open property. It's got public uses related to it. So I don't know if we can, you know, it's one thing for us in a private transaction to say that whether or not we can tell the state and feds, we want to reserve this right. But maybe that would be a good way out of it too. It would be to say, you know, I don't know. I don't have an answer to that. I think we tried before.
Further comments, questions?
I mean, go for it. I'll keep talking, but I, I, I don't want to jump in on anybody else. But my feeling is that I guess I'm leery of paying $300,000 for a small patch of green space there. I am interested in, we've discussed all these other options and I am interested in exploring those a little bit further because I think that green space isn't the only option. And I think there was some public perception after that session that that was the only thing that we talked about. But I think there are other options and I'm still curious in finding out what those are in the limited time we have. But I'm, I'm not sure I can justify that amount of expense plus the ongoing lack of income that we would have from the property taxes for just a small amount of green space. I don't know how others feel, but that's, that's, for that particular option, that's where I'm feeling. Jack?
I received an email from a community resident, I think, I think everyone did, saying, well, you know, it seems like everybody's doing into this green space thing. And so it's a foregone conclusion. And so why should we even bother with the, with the, with the city manager's discussion process? And my reaction was that I'm not sure that that's really true. You know, I, I didn't see it as I'm all on team green space at this point much as I value green space. I see the multiple public goods that could go here. So given that this new information probably alters the considerations, I, I still think it's worth having the manager convene this group to talk about it a little bit.
Good.
I don't know if I can justify spending $300,000, but I really want to. And I think that I am, I am definitely still on team green space as much as I can be. And I think that I, I'm confident that there are a significant number of residents at least who are also in that direction. This is, I was unhappy to, to see that this is a kind of stumbling block in, in the way of the, the plans or the, the ideas, let's say, that, that I already really got pretty excited about. And I can see that it does make it a lot more difficult. But I'd like to, to keep pushing if, if we can for, for that, something like that original idea.
I too am strongly in favor of green space. And to me, $300,000 is a lot of money, but it's a question for me of what, one, I'm going to be a little selfish and say what I want my legacy to be as a city council member is creating a space in downtown Montpelier where everyone can be. I know that Pocket Park is going away, I assume, because we haven't received any counterproposal from the landowner, which is incredibly frustrating on many levels. But, you know, $300,000 for a green space that literally everyone can enjoy versus high-end, you know, commercial realty. I appreciate the need for commercial space, but we also have a whole bunch of buildings in Montpelier that have open commercial space right now. And we've had a hard time filling those spaces. So to me, green space is the way to go. And $300,000 is a significant price tag, but it's the kind of thing I think that will yield a more significant social return than creating more high-end office space with prime parking.
Thoughts?
All right. Well, so I'm going to jump in here and say that I, I think, I mean, one of the things that I'm really hopeful for through this process is because it's right on the river, I think there's actually quite a bit of opportunity for grants. So, I mean, one possibility is that we might end up paying $300,000. Another possibility is that we might be able to find some grant funding. Now, to be fair, it is a tight turnaround. I don't know if that's realistic. I, I agree that I think it's probably reasonable to ask this. You manage to continue to move forward with this group and, you know, exploring our possibilities. But I also, like, one of the things that this changes for me is just thinking about the timeline and anticipating that there's likely to be, well, we've got to do something, right, by when people are starting to construct whatever's going to happen there in May. But that may not ultimately be what we want there and that's okay. So I guess I would just, you know, put the ask out there that the crew consider what is the short-term and long-term plans. And I want to stay open to, I mean, I, I do prefer green space, but I, I am certainly open to if that's not the right solution. Like, I want to be open to that possibility. So, yeah. Go ahead, Donna.
Well.
I'm done.
I thought we were still going to be a bit on the hook for the, the 300, whatever money we owe the feds towards the, the space that's not going to be the building. Whether we sell that space or not, we owe them the money. Unless we do something that definitely makes it transportation. So it's not just the green space costing us this money. Okay? And I felt the green space with some like parking, at least would give us flexibility to still look at in the future, maybe having a building there that isn't so dependent on parking. So I just, I want that clear. It's not just the green space costing us money. We owe the feds back because we have changed a use. And I guess I have to sort of separate those two.
That's right.
Now, I felt the green space with some parking and putting the road where this drawing had it gave us more flexibility. And if it doesn't, then I'd wanna put the road where it gives us the most flexibility. And then, if we have the two years to pay AOT back, then let's really seriously explore what we want to do in the next six months. Is that viable, Bill?
Sure.
Any other different comments? Yes?
Just to point out that it may not, the price tag may not be three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand plus forty thousand dollars a year in tax expenditures, taxes that we might have collected from this property.
I think that might be high, that estimate that we got, at least for the municipal tax. Again, depending on what goes there, the building that was permitted, we estimated it would bring around seventy-five hundred to eight thousand in municipal taxes per year.
And water revenues.
And, yeah, and additional water revenues, and downtown improvement tax, and sewer and all that. But, but just in terms of general fund taxes, so, you know, the number that we got may have included school taxes and everything else is a higher amount, but, and it depends on what's built and what it's valued at. So, the permitted building was about, gonna be valued at about seven fifty. The cost of it was about one point five million. So, I think sometimes people say, oh, you're putting a one-and-a-half, you know, million-dollar building in there. That's what your taxes are gonna be, but actually, you can't then turn around and sell it for one and a half million. It's market value, something less than that, so.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Do you feel like you have clear enough direction?
Well, I mean, I think the issue is you want to, you want to continue having a conversation, and that we're cognizant. And I, I mean, I just didn't want to call the group together if people's minds had changed, so.
Okay. Are we satisfied with that, team?
I encouraged the person who emailed us to get on this committee. We'll see.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, and we're on to the budget.
Yes.
So, are you, are you gonna done that one? Okay.
This will not take very long.
All right. So, I sent out information today. You do not need to know it or have read it for tonight. This is basically, I'm going over what it is, and Todd just handed out the copy. So, this is a very short preview of, I think, the discussions that we're gonna have over the next couple of weeks. And I tried to lay it out for you as simply as possible, and I think where we ended up was in a pretty good place, better than I thought we were going to. So, basically, you know, we put together a base budget that kept our core functions, our direct services, pursued the goals and priorities, met our regulatory mandates, and kept our capital funding. So, what's in the base? We started saying, what if we just do the same thing next year, this year? Same funding for everything, same staffing, no changes. And we actually, well, fortunately, we had increased revenues for pilot, increased revenues in local options tax. So, those policies are helping to defray the cost of local government, among some other things. So, to basically roll everything just over, it was really a less than one percent budget increase and actually a point-three percent tax decrease. It's pretty minor, but, you know, basically, the same thing. We do the same thing next year. It's gonna cost the same thing. So, we said, all right, well, what are the key, you know, what are the key elements that people have talked about? So, we took a look at some of the things you told us. Now, one of the commitments that I know I personally made, and we had, we had talked about as a council at least last year, was adding another fifty thousand to the capital plan. So, if you add that back in, because that wasn't in that, do the same thing next year. Adding a new, full-time new police officer, raising the Housing Trust Fund fifteen thousand. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit. The Housing Trust Fund request was to go from sixty to a hundred and fifty thousand. And that is a lot of money, but it's really broken up into three distinct portions. The first seventy-five of it is a commitment we've already made to the French Block project. So, we've gotta have seventy-five in the budget next year if we don't do anything else. So, we've gotta go from sixty to seventy-five. The next sixty was to retain the home, first-time homebuyers program. The last twenty was to put away for the potential Christchurch housing project in three years with the idea that next year, we'd have one fifty, we'd have sixty for first-time homebuyers, leaving ninety. Save that. Same thing the following year, ninety and ninety is one eighty, plus the twenties, two hundred thousand, which is what we would need for the Christchurch. So, so the request is broken up into three. So, when you see our increments further on, we broke them out that way. You all had indicated the ashbor was a high priority, so the team included a full-time position for trees for this next year. And those numbers include benefits in there. And then we took a look at the facilities position, and what we talked about, so we agreed that's a high priority. And we, we agree that it's gonna be important, not only for, you know, we're gonna have a new parking garage, we're gonna have a new transit center, you know, we're looking at a new potential recreation center. You know, we have facilities, plus all of our existing facilities needs. And the idea of implementing some sort of a sustainable energy plan. So, when we do the full presentation next week, you'll see that we're gonna recommend seeking funding and using existing funding to get a grant, to do, hire a consultant, do the energy plan so that a new facilities person that has something to implement, rather than have, you know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be the person that can do the plan. They're gonna be the person that can make it happen. So, what we, what we've kind of came up with was, you know, splitting the baby, was this is a full-time position, but if we don't start it until April of next year, we're only paying for a quarter of it now. Now, that means we're basically adding to the following year's budget, a full-time position. But it was a way to do that. So, with those in, that brings us, those add two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to the budget and increases the budget two point seven percent, tax increase of two point four percent. CPI for this year was two point five percent. So, this was basically, if you want to keep your budget at CPI, this is what we would prioritize as the things that should go in there now. We all know it's mix and match time, so we'll talk about that next. So, here's the mix and match. These are other things that we talked about as a group, not only as our own team, but from the strategic plan and from the discussions, the budget surveys, and then the last meeting when you all laid out what your priorities are. So, and you can see some things aren't here twice, and it's because we've looked at them as incremental ways you could get there. So, the first one was the Housing Trust Fund. So, that's the next sixty thousand that we talked about for the first-time homebuyers. A part-time parks position, which would, again, we had some debate whether that would also be, like we did with the facilities, that we wouldn't fill it till next spring, you know, for the following summer, and have it be a full-time position, or whether they would actually have it be part-time throughout the year. Parks wanted to not make that decision just yet. This is the remainder of the point of the facilities position. They get a full-time position that starts in July rather than in April. Art Synergy asked for a fifty thousand dollars. We just broke it up into two twenty-five thousand dollar, you know, give them part. The full-time parks position that, you see that it starred with the parks time. That is not two positions that would be adding to the part-time to make it full-time. So, it would just be combining those two. And then, the remaining twenty thousand for the Housing Trust Fund. Art Synergy, then the remaining twenty-five thousand for them. Montpelier Alive had asked for an additional ten thousand dollars, and we put that on the list. I would like to do a citizen survey, the National Citizen Survey. Our proposal this year is actually gonna be to take existing money, do it this year for fifteen thousand, and then this suggestion is you put five thousand a year away, and then do it every three years so that you're constantly funding it, and you're updating the data and the info on a regular basis. It's not a lot of money. Probably could've gone, if I'd known we were gonna end up with a minus, I probably would've just put it in the bank. But, and then the library funding that you discussed tonight. Obviously, we made this list before knowing whether it was gonna be on the ballot without a petition, so maybe we need to think about how we figure that out. So, those are, those are the items that are in play that would be above. So, they all total up to an additional two hundred and ninety-five thousand, which is an additional tax increase of three point one cents, percents, and three point four cents. So, if you put all in, you'd have a four point seven percent budget increase, five and a half percent tax increase at six cents with, if everything was on the list. So, that's kind of the field that we're playing with. So, tonight, I'm basically gonna give you this preview. Next week, we'll get you the books and the full analysis and some of the more articulated proposals. And then we have scheduled, it says January third. I think it's actually January second. It's a Wednesday, January second. And the idea, that's an only budget, so I think, you know, we can get in there. And then the two public hearings, of course, which you can also do work on. And I mention this only because we do have full agendas on the nineteenth, and we will have agendas on the ninth and twenty-four. Budget isn't the only thing on those agendas. So, really, the workshop day is the one that we really have devoted to it. Now, given the numbers and the bunch of talk, you know, I don't know that we'll need more than that. So, that's it for that. And there's one other thing I wanna... So, the other thing we sent you tonight was your way of looking at this. Let me see if I can find what I'm looking for. Hold on. No, that's not it. We have these computers that aren't ours, so.
This is the Excel sheet, right?
Yes, the Excel sheet, and I wanna just show that to everybody. That's not, I don't know who that is. Where would that be? I wanna, it's on this, I know. Okay, here, here we go. So, what this is, is just an Excel sheet, and I, I just gave it, what I just told you is all on here. And this is hard to read here, but you have it. So, basically, what this is showing you at the top is just the summary that I told you. Here's the, here's the lines that you have and the base revenue. So, and then the next blocks here are just giving you an example of things that are included in that base budget. Now, there is one increase. I said everything was funded the same. The Montpelier Community Fund, actually, they just came through with awards of a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred. That's up from one fifteen-five. However, last year, that twenty-six thousand that was petitioned, those people all got funded. So, that's up nine, but the ballot articles are down twenty-six. So, we say we take that trade anytime. So, that was the one difference. And the other item is, of course, there's no zero for Central Vermont Public Safety Authority, which was another contributor. So, you can just get a sense of what's in the budget. Then below are the list I just went through, so you can see what those base adds. And then here comes the fun part.
We don't usually mix fun with budget.
Yeah, right.
That is really cool.
So, what you have here is this is, these are the add-ons. And if you decide that you want to increase the Housing Trust Fund, you just put a little X there and hit enter, and it's gonna add it to the budget, and it's gonna add it to the tax rate and show you, and then accumulate it at the bottom. And you'll see how currently, the base budget at this property value, two twenty-eight, which is the median home value, it goes up sixty dollars. Well, now, it's gonna go up seventy-six dollars because you added that. You can also add your own home value in there if you want to see, or try different values if you're interested at what it might affect you at different things. But anyway, if you, all you have to do, if you want to add, is put Xs in here, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
And so, that is the spreadsheet. So, like I said, if you max it out, and then, so that allows you to mix and match. Now, the other thing that you can do also is, of course, go up above and delete anything here, if you want to take out. You might want to put it on the side because it doesn't have that same X function. So, just remind yourself that it was fifty thousand, so if you want to add it back in, that you know what the number is. We didn't get that advanced. And, and obviously, if you want to take something out from above, at least make a note of it. And our thought was, this gives you folks a week to play with this and, on your own, and see and decide what combos you have. And next week, we'll do the full presentation, and then maybe we can just get a sense of where everybody's at by using this tool, and then have, then really sort it all out on the second.
Now, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On my tablet here, this synopsis is showing up as read-only.
Yeah, you can still, so you should still be able to do it. If you can't, we'll fix it.
Probably what you need to do, because as an attachment, it is probably read-only, but then you need to, like,
Enable, yeah.
Either download it into Excel or open it with Google Sheets, and then you should be able to edit it.
File save as or something.
Right. But if there's any problem, that would be happy to help out with.
This is my favorite thing.
Can we make this available to the public?
We're gonna, we're gonna put it on the website tomorrow.
Yeah, that, so we did discuss making it available to the public.
So, people can do the same.
This is a completely unlocked version that you're seeing, and so the formulas and everything could be changed and tweaked. So, we're just gonna tidy up that presentation so we don't end up with a lot of different versions.
But, yeah, we weren't really gonna do it as a game, like, that kind of thing, but we'll at least put it out so people can be making, can be...
But it kind of is.
It kind of is.
No, but I mean, yeah, so, maybe next year we'll have more robust budget.
Yeah, it'll be better next year.
Better, of course.
It'll get better.
So, well, because you should be able to, but anyway, it kind of gives you a synopsis of the general budget. Now, what it doesn't give you, of course, is everything that's in this, right? The top budget, the base budget, when we talked about services. And we don't expect you to take our word for it that it's just the same. So, that is why you have these detailed sheets. They're not the most interesting things in the world. But if someone wants to see, you know, what's in the fire department budget or the police department budget and wants to know why salt is up, or those kind of things, that that's in there, or the fuel, you know, what our assumptions were. We didn't want to, you know, we want to make sure that's out there. And again, we'll explain more of that with the budget book. I'd say the other main thing that we want to, so that's really all we have to talk about tonight. We're happy to answer any questions about any of it. We're happy to, you know, if you guys want to make all your decisions right now, we're happy to do that and be done with it. And if, but more importantly, typically with budget processes in the years past, we've spent a lot of time with departments presenting their budgets. And I've actually pushed very hard for that because, at least, sometimes in years past, councils weren't that interested in hearing from the departments. I feel like you all spent an inordinate amount of time should be visiting all the departments and talking with them and learning about their operations and really getting acquainted. So, I think in the interest of using time, if there are specific people that you want to see, or agencies or groups that you want to see because of questions about these policy decisions, or something you don't like, you know, in the operating budgets, let's get them in and use our time wisely and talk to them. And, you know, if you don't, if you just, you know, I'm picking on the fire department because there's really is no change. It's just same as it was. And so, if you want Bob to come in and tell you about the sixteen firefighters and how they work and what shifts they run, and I'm sure he'd be delighted to do that, but if at the end of the day, we're just gonna say, okay, thanks, you know, maybe we should use it more and say, why do you need that extra police officer? Or tell us about those parks positions and tree positions, or maybe weighing some of these decisions. So, that's just my professional opinion, and that goes against twenty-three years of saying you should always talk to your staff more. But I just feel like you folks made a huge effort this year to do that, and they all appreciate that, so.
I think Conery actually has pending charges possibly, or from an overnight, so. That's going above and beyond.
That's right. Ruben Boyd. So, if there are any questions, Todd or I, and Todd really did a great job on this, putting the budget together. Our staff really did a great, you know, our, every year we do that budget, group budget. It gets a little smoother, a little better, a lot of trust in the room. And we tried to reflect what you told us, but also, we felt it was important that you saw a base budget at CPI. So, that if that was anyone's desire, that that was a place to start from.
So, just for context for this time right now, I am, this is probably not the time to be advocating for what you would want, but if there are clarifying questions or process suggestions, yeah.
I'm just thankful for everyone that we did the approach we did and looked broad, and you brought us back. Very specifics, and yet with broader options. I really appreciate it.
This is, this makes me very happy.
Marv, let's...
Yeah, I'm really excited about this spreadsheet. I mean, I know that's been said, but I did say it. I'm very excited about it. I'm excited to share it with the public.
And so, you'll all have great holidays because you'll have your budget books next week on the nineteenth, and your spreadsheet. And you can spend your holidays looking at budgets and playing with spreadsheets. You can fix them up if you want more options, right?
So, I do have a clarifying question related to the point-two-five facilities person. Number one, I would really love to work in energy into the title of that because, and that is why I'm gonna support it. So, I just want to make sure that that's really clear. Yes, they're, you know, taking care of energy, or not energy, they're taking care of the facilities, but also the, particularly the energy aspects of our facilities. So, that's, that's not really a question. That's really just a comment.
An order.
Yeah, yep. But there is a question buried in here, which is that I wonder how this relates to, I think we have a point-two-five position now for...
Right, and that's in right now, particularly if we're gonna delay the hire because Steve's doing a huge amount of work to keep a lot of our bids and processes going. I'm glad you actually made that comment or asked that. I'm glad you actually made that comment or asked that question in a comment fashion. Because we also intended, one of the things we also want to do is have this person being in charge of the district heat system. So we very clearly on top, and that means not only getting new customers, but making it work, and looking at all the options. Right now, it's being cobbled together by our DPW. So we have a lot of facilities, and certainly the energy functions of those facilities are very important. But, you know, you may recall, a couple of years ago, the staff came and said, we just need help with our facilities too. There's an energy aspect of it, but we also need help. And we're, you know, we're going to be operating a parking garage, you know, with automated systems and financial collections, and we're going to have a transit center. And, you know, these are things that, and if we do a rec center, then these are all things that someone's got to be running.
Sorry, so can we come back to the, so Steve Chombly has a .25 position now?
It's contracted, yes.
Contracted, so.
So that's still in the budget for next year.
That's still in the budget for next year. So this is sort of on top of.
For next year, at least, because the anticipation is we're not hiring till April.
Okay, and so then the.
And we'll be doing the energy planning before then.
Would be that.
Potentially in the future, we would.
We could combine those two pots of money.
Yes.
Okay. Great, that was my clarifying question. Others?
I realize nobody has any detail to have looked at, so I don't, but if there's general questions about anything happening. Otherwise, we'll get out of here before 9:30.
I know, right? That would be amazing. Perhaps if there are further questions, you can just email.
Yep. And of course, again, this will be on the agenda next week. And again, I don't, because we have a full agenda, it'll probably be another brief, you know, I'll give you a quick presentation overview of the budget, but that's.
The goal is to send you into the holiday break with the documents, the spreadsheet, the ability to contemplate the budget process, you know, over that.
But any feedback that you have, if, just for this week, if you've already had a chance to weigh things, then it might be good to see where everyone's at, too, just so we can be running numbers.
Next week.
Next week, yeah.
So great, sir, I don't need my skis, don't need my snowshoes, don't need my skates. Got it all right here.
You're all set, that's right.
Okay, so any further questions about this, at this point, about the budget at this point?
And if you need any help with the spreadsheet, please call either of us.
Okay, great, thank you. This is wonderful in many ways, so, excited to have this conversation.
We were happy that.
Charts are coming as part of this process as well.
Oh yeah, we wouldn't forget the charts.
We use the Excel spreadsheet.
Totally going to be that person, though. Print is really small on these spreadsheets.
Well, so you can expand them.
Yeah, I know, but not these.
All those.
Yeah, it's like, it's the, and I have contacts in, so I can't do the look over.
Agreed. The books you get next week will.
Okay, good.
We fixed that.
It's a little embarrassing, my birthday just happened, but boy, it's clearly gotten worse.
Yeah, well, so we emailed it out, which obviously then you can expand on screen, that, those are two things. And we do expand it a little in the budget book itself.
I can see it much better when I can zoom in. I just want to make sure that for the public who wants to read.
Oh yeah, we put that online too, as well, and the budget book will go online.
And you can switch this to landscape, too.
That's right, it's really maximize viewing.
Okay, so keeping in mind that we have 15 minutes, basically, to go before 9:30, we have no other business regularly. So council reports, let's start with Rosie.
Pass.
Jack.
Nothing to report.
I will carry on and pass.
Okay, Donna.
Oh dear.
Okay, okay.
Well, I hope you all got the draft that I left on your desk. And this is, the first couple of pages are just offline, I mean, online, I just loaded it down from another city, things to think about. The third page is actual policies and standard statements that I found. And then the fourth page was the evaluation as we have it now. So I would just like you to look at this, I will send it out electronically, and, you know, edit and add and mark out, but really get interactive with it. And maybe new year, we can attack this and get our own evaluation system going.
So just for the public's benefit, it's a council self-evaluation tool.
Yes, thank you, yes, yes.
Sorry, carry on.
And there's been a lot going on in transportation. You heard me talk about the monthly, your infrastructure committee is going to be having hearings about GMT's routes and the mini transit. They're also interested in the LEDs that DPW talked about on the downtown lights at the capital improvement plan. And there's just a lot going on, and I was surprised to not see you all out the flash mob for the complete streets on December 5th. But we went out with our flashing lights, and we stopped every pedestrian. I mean, within 10 minutes, I had hit 15 pedestrians just on Main Street, dark as anything. And I got out by the library, all of them. The first thing they said was, oh, where's your light? Oh, that's cool, I should have that. Yes, you should. So really, there's, John Snell just emailed earlier that a man, 74-years-old pedestrian, got hit in Burlington and died today. And it's just dark, and we just have a lot of dark clothes, but we have to take responsibility as pedestrians to brighten ourselves up. We also need to be, as drivers, very, very, very careful. I have two people who are interested in joining the e-scooters, so I'm hoping that group evaluation will happen. One is from the Complete Streets, is one is from the M-TIC. And also, lots of positive comments about our flashing crosswalk signs. I hope everybody uses them, push the button, it'll make it flash. Thank you.
All right, just a few things first. I think at one point, I spoke about maybe a project labor agreement language. As you know, we're building a lot of things in town. I'm always very cognizant that we're doing it in a fashion that's consistent with our values as a city. Some of the PLA stuff, I did research in other cities, I think it could be vulnerable to legal challenges. So I have been working on drafting some responsible contracting language that would entail paying responsible wages, participating in job training programs, and also opening us up to, you know, private rights of action, just to make sure we're in compliance with workers' comp, everything like that. So I hope that language for you in the next couple of weeks here on that. Other things, final scooter stats for the month that we had it. 2,245 miles traveled within the city limits here. So that's, that's pretty good for a fleet. And the last week of it, as you know, was pretty dodgy weather. So we didn't get a full month out of it. I think you could look at the first week there as being more analogous to what we would look at if we had it on the ground. It's not apples to apples, but if that was traveled by cars, that would be over 2,000 pounds of CO2 emissions avoided in town. What I'd like to do is maybe work with Sue on developing a survey for the riders of the scooters there, and really nail down how they were using the scooters, to see how much of this actually replaced, you know, road traffic there, and how much of it was just, you know, kids riding on sidewalks without helmets, maybe drinking beer while they're doing it, I don't know. So we'll figure it out. Last thing, and I don't want to steal John's thunder on this, but I've been talking to a lot of legislators. If we think our charter changes are a slam dunk over there with the bags and the non-U.S. citizen voting, we are sadly mistaken. I think these pass by such a margin that we need to be really good advocates for the city, and make sure these get over the finish line. You know, often a legislative tactic is just delay, delay, delay. We need to be ready to get over there and testify in the drop of a hat, because that might be how quick it is. Bring people who are affected, I think, tell the human story on this, and make sure it doesn't get legalese to death here. And I think we can get it passed, but it's going to be a challenge there. So I hope we can all work on that, and encourage folks in the community to do the same, so.
I just want to put out there that I am saving some of my personal time at, you know, from working for the need, you know, should you need, at the drop of a hat, for somebody to go testify. Just let me know. I'm into it, so likewise.
Thanks. Nothing to say this week, except come join me tomorrow morning at Baguio's, 8:30 to 9:30. The last couple of weeks have been well-attended. I'm looking to get enough people that I can just sit back and listen and not talk at all. And I really encourage you to help me do that, so thank you.
So I just have one thing really to report, which is the investment, investment committee today met, chose priority council, and we are going to have a recommendation for you all about a divestment policy. So I'm pretty excited about that. So that's coming up on November, November, January 9th. And then, yeah, that's it. Okay, great.
I never have anything to say, and we want to get out of here. I'll make it quick. The Monday before last, yeah, last week's Monday, I was fortunate enough, privileged enough, to be invited to a closed-door meeting at NYU Law that was put on by the, oh god, there's so many words here, Global Resilience Network and the International Center for Enterprise Preparedness. This is a group of a lot of folks from homeland security, from the intelligence community, from other election administrators, secretary states, secretaries, folks from secretary states offices, and some folks in the private and nonprofit community, sort of looking back on election cyber security over this year, and working towards making a sort of collective set of recommendations for the next year. And, yeah, I mean, it was, it was great. I was the only vermontre there. But I just thought I would throw out that that happened, and it was terrific. And hopefully, the report will be available soon.
I think I've talked plenty and written plenty. Do we have anything we need to update? Can you think of anything quickly? Nope, I think we'll pass.
Great, okay. So then, without objection, we consider the meeting adjourned.
10 minutes.
At a time!